Evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Chuck Shan. I'm the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. This is the April 1st special meeting of the Stonington Planning and Zoning Commission. Just before we call the meeting to order, if you're here for one of the items, it's been rescheduled for April 15. It's a zoning amendment application at 12 Skipper Street. Will not be heard tonight. Don't want anybody to hang around waiting for something and find out later on that they've waited for half an hour and nothing, nothing's going to take place. So we won't be hearing the item on Skipper Street, 12 Skipper Street this evening. Other than that, everything's on, correct? Okay. So with that, I'll call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. And we are missing one of our regular members. Did Alyssa respond affirmatively that she would be here?
No, she, I don't think she's here.
She's not going to be here? Okay. And who are we appointing tonight to act in her stead? Dave, so Dave Rizendez will be sitting in and Dave will act in the regular portion of the meeting and also in the public hearing. Good to have you on board, Dave. What's the commission's pleasure on the minutes of March 18?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for meeting number 1786 for March 18, 2025 as submitted.
Motion approved by Ryan. Thank you, Ryan. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Seconded by Gary Bokey. Thank you, Gary. Any discussion? No amendments or anything? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Minutes of March 26?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for meeting number 1787 for March 26, 2025 as submitted.
Motion to approve is submitted. Thank you, Ryan. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Seconded by Gary Bokey. Thank you, Gary. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
I abstain. I wasn't wanting to.
Anyone opposed? The chair votes aye. Motion passes. At this point in the meeting, there's an opportunity for the public to speak. This is for items that are not on the agenda. So if the item that you want to speak about is an item on this agenda, it's not for this portion of the meeting. But if you'd like to come up, just state your name. And we do have a long meeting tonight, so I ask that you keep your comments as brief as possible, but this is an opportunity for you to say whatever you want.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Marilyn Dalton.
Evening, Marilyn.
Good evening. And I live at 130 Greenville Avenue, which is the corner of Velvet Lane and Route 27. And I'm here about my concerns about valet parking and going down Velvet Lane. There was a traffic study done in January of 2019. It was pre-pandemic. The town has changed since then. There's a lot more traffic and the traffic is in the summertime. And also, there's a lot of traffic on weekends where there's the art show, the wooden boat show, and the sea glass festival. And just a little aside, it was very busy. And so I was making my left-hand turn and I thought, you know what? I'm just going to time it. Took four minutes to make the left-hand turn. And that was on a Tuesday around 4 o'clock in the afternoon. It was just a regular day. It wasn't even a weekend. So the questions I have are, will this valet parking be for weddings for the 250 people that are guests in the banquet? Are all those people going to be coming down Velvet Lane? How many drivers are there? And what are the hours that they'll be coming down Velvet Lane? Velvet Lane is a narrow historic street that serves residents, Airbnbs, the museum staff, trucks that unload for the exhibits and the mill. And cars are parked on both sides of the street. So it's, you know, difficult to maneuver now. And then there's also the thought of emergency vehicles being able to come on the street. So the study appears to downplay traffic volume. This will impact our neighborhood and the quality of our life. And an alternate plan is just to go up and down the Rossi-Pentway. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay. Thank you for listening.
Yes, sir. Please state your name, if you would, for the record.
Steve from 19 Velvet Lane in the state. Good evening. I have a handout. So there's the, this plan here with my write-up.
Oh, thank you very much, Steve.
Middle one. You want to?
We'll hand those out.
Okay. Thank you. I'm talking on the same subject as Marilyn. I learned about this on a 4-March meeting about a month ago. And I also learned this loop was approved in 2023, about three years after the Seaport Hotel was approved. I went to Planning and Zoning and they gave me a copy of the Traffic Impact Study. And in this study, they lay out and show in Figure 6 the hotel valet parking and Figure 11, the restaurant. And it's basically the same thing. Cars leave the parking lot, they go to the light on Rossi, they take a right and then swing right-left into that site driveway. So there's no mention of Velvet Lane in this study. This study didn't include Velvet Lane. So I have a couple of concerns. If this study studied that path with Rossi, Route 27, hanging a left, how did Velvet Lane get in here? Did you have a hearing on this? I never heard about a hearing, either than Marilyn. And that's my first question. If there was no hearing, you know, I would think you'd want to notify people on Velvet Lane about a change to Velvet Lane. So if there was no hearing, no notification, can this become null?
It's predominantly a traffic issue. So if there was a hearing per se on traffic associated with this, it would have been before the state, before, not the State Traffic Commission, our local traffic commission. So maybe that's why this, you know, the focal point of this was probably the traffic commission. Did this go before the traffic commission, Cliff?
It did, and it also went before this commission.
So.
Okay. When did it go before this commission?
This was spoken on February 7, 2023.
Okay. Well, I didn't.
It was also, but the authority really for traffic is vested with the traffic commission. But we're happy to hear from you. You know, I want to hear your concerns, but there is more, a wider focus on this than just this commission, and I want you to know that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. So, and then my second part of the question was, my second concern was, I have no idea. I have safety concerns about this level of traffic on Velvet Lane. When I go out in the summer, I don't generally go down Velvet Lane to take left. I go through the Seaport parking lot to the Rossi-Route-27 intersection and take a left. I don't think, I think it's too great a safety risk to take a left on Route 27 and head south. So I would like to see their safety analysis on this. And furthermore, with the cars backing up, cars waiting at the end of Velvet Lane if you're forced to take a left, you know, you're not going to get emergency vehicles up there because you have a street that's effectively become a one-lane road heading out. And there's various problems with that, including pedestrian safety. So I'd like to learn more about the traffic safety. And if it went before this commission on February 7, 2023, we should have been notified. So we could have spoke about it. And I don't recall receiving a notification. Maybe I did, but do you guys have evidence of that?
We checked the records to see how it was advertised and what notices went out.
All right. Okay. That's in summary what I have. You can read my letter if you want.
Thank you very much, Dave.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, do you recommend that these people go to the police commission to talk about this?
If they have a traffic concern, I think that's where the authority really rests, to initiate a local study and to review this again. We would have a very hard time bringing this up again. I do want to take a look to see if everybody that was supposed to get a notice got a notice. I don't know that there's anything that can be done to fix a defect like that, but I would like to make sure that we look at our process. And if we, if we didn't get it right, which I doubt, you know, I'm sure it was advertised. I'm not sure about, do perimeter, is there, are there notices that go out to people within an affected area?
Right.
There are? Okay. We'll check, we'll check that to see if all of that was done correctly.
But in the interim, going to the police commission to talk about your concerns is important and it's up to you to do that.
There's also, there's also way beyond that. PURA, you know, not PURA, OSTA. I got my acronyms mixed up here. There's so many of them these days. But OSTA is the Office of State, the State Traffic Commission. They used to call it the State Traffic Commission. Now it's OSTA. This is a state highway.
Right.
And OSTA does have some jurisdiction. And you can raise the matter through DOT, through the district office in Norwich, and through the district engineer. And you can tell them you have a traffic concern and you want to get it in front of OSTA. It involves a state highway.
Right.
And they can be very helpful as well. In fact, they have, they have a lot more authority and a lot more money. And I think frankly, I would start there.
All right. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome, Steve. Thank you. Thank you both for your comments. Much appreciated. Okay. If there's no one else to speak, anyone else? Okay. I guess that's, that's it. Staff reports?
On public comment, Chuck, I did have something to distribute.
Oh, I'm sorry, Cliff. Go right ahead.
I received a letter from Attorney Hoiler at Robertson &amp; Cole regarding PZ 2314, special use permit. This is the Janet LLC gas station. You received a second letter from opposing counselor a few months back. They wanted to submit a response in public comments, so I'm going to distribute that. But I'm not going to read it into the record.
Any other comments, Cliff?
None.
Okay. Nothing under staff report?
Nothing under staff report.
Okay. Under the commission, we have, we have one item. This is a review of Clear Drive. This is like a pre-acceptance. And who owns it now? Is it in private ownership?
It's owned by DOT.
It's owned by DOT. Okay. So it's coming to the town from DOT?
Correct.
All right. So this is required by state statute prior to transfer of ownership of a road that it be looked at for standards. And we have a memo from the Public Works Department saying they've inspected it. Our Public Works Director has indicated, I think, that it's acceptable.
Correct.
And it meets our standards for acceptance. And this is not such an uncommon thing in larger jurisdictions where the state abandons state highways to local jurisdiction. And frankly, I think in this case, it's better that we now have control over all of the curb cuts here as opposed to the state DOT. So there were several maps included. One was very helpful. It was superimposed on an aerial photograph. It showed all the turning lanes and frankly, when I'm driving through there, I didn't realize there were as many turning lanes and painted islands. And it's, there's a lot of traffic weaving that takes place within that small space. And it's wider than I thought it was as well. But I don't have any questions on the acceptance and I don't have any objections on the acceptance. I think it requires a motion and approval, correct?
Correct. The proper procedure is a finding of consistency with the plan of conservation and development.
Okay.
So that's what the motion and the vote would be.
Unless the commission has any, any questions, I think overall, it's better for this major arterial, which connects an arterial roadway with an interstate highway, to be within our local purview as opposed to OSTA's local purview.
I agree.
What's the commission's pleasure on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to submit that the Clear Drive CGS 8-24 review for this be approved and be designated as consistent with the plan of conservation and development.
Motion that it is consistent with the plan of conservation and development, the acceptance by Ryan. Thank you, Ryan. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Seconded by Gary. Thank you, Gary. Any questions on the motion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The chair abstains. The motion passes. You have in your packets zoning enforcement violations. Unless anyone has any questions, we'll move on to administrative review. Okay. The first item under administrative review is application number 25-058ZON Clavdi LLC. This is at the Dog Watch Barbecue. And it's administrative review for the use of portable restrooms for events on an as-needed basis. There's a map that was submitted that shows the location at the angular intersection of several portable restrooms. We have some pictures of what they look like. Is there anyone here from Dog Watch to talk about this application?
How are you doing?
I'm doing fine. How are you?
Good. Has anyone ever been to an event in the tent at Dog Watch?
It's in the lunchroom.
So, you know, we have this event tent. We have this event tent and it's very successful. And we have weddings and we have rehearsal dinners and everything else under the sun. And we have two bathrooms in the restaurant. It's a pretty small restaurant. And so it's not unusual to have 40 or 50 people in the tent. And we thought it would be really nice if we could, for events, roll in those really nice, beautiful portable bathrooms to have a wedding, you know? It's on a trailer, so it just comes in and goes out. And then it would be down there by the tent. We would landscape it so that it would look fit in. And then the company who rents it to us would just, when it's over, would come take it away.
They did a really nice job of those giant Abrevitie.
That was a mess.
There were actually several of them left over, which I bought.
Oh, you did? Okay.
I did. Mine died.
That should make this administrative review very easy.
But my only concern about the location of them is that it appears to be outside of the Abrevitie. Is it out, the tent, is the tent outside of the Abrevitie or is the tent inside of the?
The tent's way inside.
It is, way inside. And how about the portable restrooms?
Portable restaurants will be, here, I got a picture. It's not a very good picture, but I'll walk it around. I didn't think we'd need it. But if you look, here is the parking area.
Yeah.
Okay. Here's the fence, between the fence. Here's the Abrevitie that's swinging around and go like this.
Yeah, yeah.
The tent is on the other side of this fence between the Abrevitie's and.
Okay.
Okay. What our thought was, these bushes, we would probably redo these bushes at 90 degrees and be able to have the guy come in. We would probably lose the parking space right here.
Okay. So there would be behind.
Okay. Here's my thought. My only thought is that there's some kind of barrier. If kids are out there going to the restrooms, that they don't end up on Route 27.
They cannot. There will be some.
Okay.
They will be totally locked in.
That's my only question.
No, we built the restaurant so kids can't.
And I really, I have a lot of faith in your ability to do it because you've done a great job with that buffer. Great job. So keep up the good work.
I bought those for $40 a piece or $50 a piece, remember that? Yeah, it did. That was a great buy.
Anybody have any questions of this applicant?
So I just have one question, Dave. Events. So are you, I think, I think there's only a certain number of people that can be at Dog Watch at a time. So are you monitoring that when you have?
Well, it's pretty much a function of parking, as you know.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
So when we have an event, we pretty much don't have a lot of people in the restaurant.
Okay.
Because there's just no place to park.
Okay.
So as you know, they're just, you know.
I just want to make sure you're not thinking this is kind of a carte blanche. You could have an event.
A seating capacity increase.
200 people there.
No, you can't have 200 people. So 20 by 40 tent.
I'm making a number up.
Yeah. No, it's a 20 by 40 tent.
Okay.
Unless you guys let me put a bigger tent in.
No, no. Maybe you got rid of those spotlights, but go ahead.
Any other questions, Dave?
We're totally limited by.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure.
If we have a good-sized event.
So what, is this grassy area or is it gravel?
Yes.
Any other questions?
No.
No.
No one? What's the commission's pleasure on this application?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve this zoning permit for designate 25058ZON Clavdi LLC, Dog Watch Barbecue LLC.
Could you just add that one landscaping provision that, you know, that there be a landscape buffer?
With the additional one stipulation, there'd be, that there be a landscape buffer between where the portable bathrooms will be placed to keep children and other folks from going out.
Thank you. Motion to approve with the landscaping stipulation. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Chair abstains. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move to public hearings. Before we go into the public hearings, we have a lot of people here to speak tonight. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask that, you know, you say your piece and I don't want to stifle the discussion or the debate at all. But to give everyone a chance to speak, I'd ask that you just be courteous. We're not going to time you and we're not going to tell you to stop. But I just ask that you be courteous of everyone in the room and try to keep your, make your point, try to keep your remarks as brief as possible. So the applicant is allowed to speak first. He presents his case. The commission has questions of the applicant. They ask the questions. We have staff for staff's input. After that, those who wish to speak either for or against or just make a statement should sign up. There's, there's two public hearings tonight. There's a sign-up sheet, if you wish to speak, in the back. Sign up and you'll be called upon in the order that you sign up to speak. The applicant will have an opportunity to rebut items that he feels he wants to rebut. And then anybody who spoke either for or against can also speak again. And we'll go back and forth until everybody said their piece. So with that in mind, again, everyone that's up here, with the exception of Mary Ellen, is voting tonight. So it's all the regular members, which is Ryan, myself, Gary, and Lynn. And Dave Rizendez is sitting in for the other member, Alicia Morrison, who is absent this evening. So with that in mind, is there someone to represent?
I think we have to have a motion to open the public.
I'm sorry. Motion to open the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to open the public hearing for PZ 2511 SUP and CAM OMFD Garrity and Bonanno LLC.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before we open the public hearing, I would just like to say that I misread the date on the minutes of 1786 and I should have abstained. I was not here on my agenda. Thank you.
Got it.
So there was one abstention. Want to check to see if we have enough to act to pass that also without you voting. So thank you. Okay. So there is a motion made. Is there a second to open the public hearing?
Second motion.
Seconded by Gary. Any discussion? All in favor? Lynn, would you please start out by, you can just read the notice on the agenda.
Okay. This is to open public hearing, PZ 2508 NAD Worland, zoning map amendment. No, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
Yeah, this is item B.
I'm sorry. Excuse me.
That's okay.
PZ 2511 SUP plus CAM OMFD, special use permit and coastal area management review applications for rescue training trailer use. The property is located on Main Street, North Stonington Road, Old Mystic, NBL 166-6-11. Property is located in an RA 20 zone.
Is there anyone from Garrity and Bonanno here who represents the applicant?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Paul Garrity from Garrity-Bonanno, 38 Granite Street. Good evening, commissioners. This is our application pursuant to Section 15 of your regulations for a special use permit on the property that the fire department owns on Main Street. I should point out and stress at the very beginning, this is not the same application that was before this commission. And I think some of the members are different from having looked at the video and so forth in 2023, where one of the items that they were seeking to do is conduct trailer, training in a trailer that we call a burn trailer and actually have live fires.
Right?
Nothing like that is proposed. The burn trailer has been removed from the site. The only activity being proposed tonight is what we refer to as dry training. It's the rescue training on the trailer. There is nothing in terms of chemicals or any other sort of materials, combustible or otherwise, that they use. You can, you can talk about this, think about repelling off the side of the road if a car was off 95 down into one of the ditches. They may have to train to get firemen down there, fire personnel. That is all this is done. So with that, I'd just like to go over a couple of housekeeping matters to make sure the record is complete. The items that we've submitted for purposes of the hearing tonight are the application, CAM application, a CAM report, signatures in support of the application, staff comments, aerial photos, a site plan, a written waiver request, an impact statement, site photos, deed to the property and proof of mailing to the butters with notice. The one question I had for the commission is, I know we emailed everything to Adriana Bancroft that way. I have the originals here. I don't know whether the commission wants the originals tonight or not. That was a little bit unclear from the email transmissions back and forth.
I think we'll take them. Yeah, it's received as it says, but the originals are always good out.
Right. Okay. In that case, I'll hand them to Downplaner.
Thank you.
The Old Mystic Fire Department was originally, and I want to give some background on this so that people can understand, because one of the issues that I'm sure is going to come up is the impact on the neighborhood. And I think it's important for this commission, they're voting on this matter, to understand. And I'm sure that many of you do, being residents of the town. But the Old Mystic Fire Department was originally known as Reliance Fire Department. Reliance was incorporated in 1946 and has been on that site or the site across from the area where the training is proposed since 1946. And some indication that it was actually there prior to that, but the incorporation date was 1946. In 1961, the department acquired the piece. That's the subject of this application. After that, there was an official name change from the Reliance Fire Department to Old Mystic Fire Department. Since 1961, the department has been using this property question for training amongst other things. And in fact, at some point, at one point in time, as everybody knows, it used it for the fire training too, in terms of live fire. Again, that is not being proposed anymore at this. Stonington, as you know, true with most towns, is largely a volunteer fire department. All the members of this department have to be trained and certified by the state of Connecticut and have to undergo regular training intervals in order to maintain their certifications and provide fire protection to the town of Stonington, its residents, and other towns if called upon. The regular, that requirement requires regular training to maintain both proficiency and their certification. All the departments within the town of Stonington use this facility and the site for training. And when they do, it's oftentimes together. So sometimes a, maybe Pawtucket might be there using it and Old Mystic Fire Department is not there, but in most cases, it's joint training exercises. And the reason for that is important because whenever there is a call that goes out, particularly for a structured fire, and I was talking with the chief about this, there was one the other day, every department in town will respond to something like that. Even other towns will respond to things like that. So it is very important to have these departments integrated. If you want to think about a big city, right? Nobody would say, well, we don't want another department training on this property because they're another department. If you go to Hartford, Station 1, because that's what they refer to them, Station 2, Station 3, no one would think twice about allowing them to train on a specific site because they're all interrelated and interdependent stations in one department. See, the other reason that they train together is so that they each know how the other one operates and how they will operate together. It's called, and you know, I hate using military terms because I think they're used way too often. And that's no disrespect. Please, I spent 30 years in the military. Son and daughter-in-law are Marines. And I have no disrespect for them, believe me, but everybody likes to jump on that bandwagon. But the military refers to it as interoperability, right? They train, the Navy trains with the Marines, so there's a little stuff between there, and the Army, et cetera. They train with other nations in order to know how the other one is going to function during this. And that's what the fire departments do. They need to know, they're using the same communication systems. They need to know how the. how the other departments will react to certain things, so it's important, because I believe, having looked at the record from the, this issue's gonna come up, we don't want other people training there, if at all. And I think that neglects to recognize the critical nature of what this training is about. The property is approximately 1.25 acres, consists of a grassy area over, in this area right here, there's a gazebo in this area, a picnic table over here, some benches over there, so a little over a quarter acre is grass. This is the area where the trailer is right now on the site and is intended to remain there. The area on the boundary line over to the easterly side of the property is a mixture of evergreen and deciduous trees that are there, and in the rear of the property, it's mostly deciduous trees, but there's such depth to it that even in the off months, off months meaning the leaves being off, you can see that it's difficult to see anything on this site. The trailer itself, as to one of the towers is what I'll call them, is approximately 25 feet at that location. The area where the trailer is right here is 56 feet from the boundary line of the property on the easterly side. I don't have the setback on the southerly side of the property. The town planner has asked that we identify that on the maps along with the setbacks from the street line over there, but you can see, it's literally about 100 feet back from the street line on that. The other issue that the planner asked that we do on here is put on a zoning compliance chart on there, we can do that, but we have no problem doing that and we'd be happy to do so. With regard to the training itself, and I have a brief in the impact statement, there's a more, there's a description in there as well on that, but with regard to the training, the equipment is generally stored at the headquarters over on the Groton side, and so when the fire personnel come to train here, they will go there first, pick up the equipment and generally come over in one of the vehicles that belongs to the fire department so that we don't have a significant amount of cars parking over in this area. Parked because they need the area to be able to train. So we don't see parking as a problem, the police department has reviewed it as part of the staff review on this, the police department indicated that they see no traffic issues with regard to this. We're training, we're talking about training between 6:30 and 9:30, a couple of nights a month, generally about 15 personnel are involved in it, and it could be a mix, as I indicated, a mix of departments training there. The parcel itself has two means of ingress and egress, there is egress and ingress down in this corner right here, and then right up in this area, and if I can show you the aerial photos on here. The photo is a bit out of date, it shows both the burn trailer and the rescue trailer, but there's a note on that that indicates that the photo itself is out of date, but it shows where the current trailer is and would be, and there were some vehicles parked at that point. But you can see from here that the sightlines, sightline looking down towards Main Street is over 500 feet, so if you're coming out on the southerly section right here, looking down towards the village, you have a 500-foot sightline. You have a 200-foot sightline up here to the curb, and I have some photographs of that, which I think are the only ones that are not part of the record, but they indicate, I think very clearly, I'm not sure who you want me to give these to, but what pickup truck vehicle would see looking in either direction, so there's clearly visibility. The other thing I should point out too, is these are gonna be all emergency service personnel leaving there, so it's not as if it's a parking lot at a concert or something, we're gonna have people being able to handle traffic and things of that nature if required.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So on the lot existing, you have the gazebo, the shed and the trailer in the picture, is that the one we're talking about, or are you gonna bring in a new trailer?
No, it's a trailer that's there right now, current trailer. Right. So that stays, no changes are prepared or planned at all for the lot, because it's simply just the trailer, the rest of it's used for parking, some vehicle storage or parking.
How long's the trailer been there?
Geez, the trailer's been, well, it was removed for a number of years when the state allowed them to utilize a property that the state had. The state canceled that lease and the trailer shot a move, so they were originally here back in the 80s, 90s, 2000s, I believe it was, and then they got the opportunity to move to the other site, and then when the lease got canceled, they had to vacate the site and they brought both trailers back to this site.
So you're here because you have the trailer, but you can't use it?
Correct.
You need permission?
Correct.
Okay.
So it's, it requires a special use in order to do this.
This is our second time back, the application was withdrawn the first time, and it was not only for the rescue portion of the training, it was also for the burn part of the training, live fire.
And I know the burn part of the application in that case drew most of the criticism from that, I think, I suspect there'll still be some criticism tonight, but by getting rid of the burn trailer, the major issue in terms of the impact on the neighborhood has been removed.
Sir, may I ask, just because I want to make sure.
Sure.
This is the trailer you're referring to that is the rescue trailer?
That's correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Good trip to that.
Right.
And is it a trailer or a conex box?
It's a conex box that used to be on, on a trailer.
Yeah, it used to be on an axle.
Right, we took it, we took it off the axle on the recommendation of past town planner.
So it's a conex box?
Yep, it's a conex box.
And I should point out too, that this photograph here is on the site, I took it in December, if you're looking through the neighbor's house over here, this is what you see, you see the trees, so even in the wintertime, the house is barely visible at all. This picture here is to the rear down here, what you see, so that would be the trailer right there, and that's the trailer in this photograph, and then you see the trees behind it. There was a CAM application because there is a small, when I say small, I mean small sliver of the property right down here that's within the coastal area management review. The CAM application and the report in your file and the report indicates that they see no adverse impact on any environmental issues, on any water quality or anything, simply because nothing is being used on the site, it's essentially sitting there dry at this point. There's no improvements proposed to the site on this, any lighting or anything would be brought to the site on the night of any training in the event that it was, it was dark, and I would point out too, that most of that type of training is done, not in the wintertime, partly because of that. One of the issues I wanted to stress too, is the only two other places that are even remotely close for training that is certified by the state is Willamette and Enfield, where the state fire station is. So we're talking about volunteers who are already giving up their time for no pay and being asked to put in training and all, maintain their certifications in order to do that. So we have a major concern that if this isn't allowed to be used for this particular training type, that it's gonna make it even harder to recruit volunteers, because then they're gonna have to travel even further on their own time, on their own dime. And if anybody, I live in East Haddam, I just moved from Haddam to East Haddam, I can tell you in the last 20 years that I've been there, there's always been a sign in front of the firehouse saying volunteers needed, and I think you see that pretty much any small town on the east side of the river that you go to. So this is an important aspect to this department's ability to provide training to most of the area departments in the town and the surrounding area. In terms of the comments from the staff, as I indicated, there's two comments in terms of adding notes to the plan that they wanted on that, that there were no other additional concerns to the application.
You mentioned Enfield and Willamette, did you say?
Correct.
What about Windsor Locks, the fire training academy?
I think that's what I, Enfield, you know, look.
Okay.
Enfield, Windsor Locks, East Windsor, they're all up.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's Southfield or.
Yeah, it's all, it's up there, right, near the Mass line.
The fire training academy at the, at Bradley.
Right.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome. So in terms of this, now we asked for a number of waivers on this, and I won't go through each individual one, because largely those waivers are, if sought, are for projects, like for instance, if there's a school being constructed, or if there's multifamily residential, it's traffic, it's water and sewer, none of it applies to this particular application, and you'll see from the staff comments response that they indicated that they were fine with the waivers, because most of them were not particularly applicable to this. Where we did provide is for the site plan, the application fee, obviously, the legal description of the property, and then the written waiver, but some, such things as an archaeological study, soil testing, a shadow plan, which, I'm not 100% sure what that is, even having looked at it, a 3D model or flood hazard report, would all be if you're changing the site itself or adding to the site. So you don't see that any of the waivers that we're asking for should impact the commission's ability to make a decision on this. Even the staff too reviewed the CAM report and found no expected coastal resource issues with regard to that, and also no traffic impact on it. The other two issues I'd like to address are the standards in your regulations. Section 6.4 has the standards that this commission must apply in terms of reviewing and approving any application for special use permit. The first is that the proposal is adequately served by sufficient water supply and sanitary facilities. We're not, it's not, nobody's occupying the property, there's no water being used on the property, so, and there won't be any pollution as a result of that, and we can clearly say there won't be any pollution as a result of that, because we're not at putting anything into the ground. This one is almost humorous but ironic at the same time, the fact that the public is fully protected by fire safety and security equipment designed to eliminate hazards.
With all of them.
Yeah, right, that's exactly what we're trying to do here. The transportation services are adequate with no undue influence on traffic, as I indicated, we've got more than adequate sightlines, the police department has signed off on this, there's gonna be no significant, I mean, there will be obviously, because fire trucks or fire vehicles have to get to the site with their crews, but there isn't gonna be a parking lot with 50 cars in there either, so there's no impact pursuant to section 4.3. Section 4.4, that it will not create at any point of determination is set forth in Articles 2 and Articles 7 of your regulations, any dangerous or objectionable elements. Having looked at both of those, it's clearly not setting forth any dangerous elements on this. This is, again, the training is all essentially teaching people how to enter buildings, how to exit buildings, how to climb down structures, et cetera, so the only risks are to the people who are participating in the training themselves.
What about noise?
I think the noise is minimal, you're obviously gonna be able to hear people talking, you may also be able to hear walkie-talkies in operation, but there's not gonna be any...
No equipment running or anything like that?
No, I think, right, it's all cables, pulleys, drive.
It depends, it depends.
What about drawers of life and stuff like that?
We use drawers of life, we've been using drawers of life there since the 70s.
Okay, but that's gas operated, right?
No.
No?
We have battery operated ones now, and if we use the hydraulic side of the unit, it runs off the truck itself, it isn't.
I have a question, just because I know, I seem to recall this coming up in the last time too, so when the trailer is not in use, is it protected enough so that little kids don't want to go climbing all over it?
We put a protective safety unit on the ladder itself so you can't go up on the tower.
And what about the staircase here too?
We didn't put anything around the staircase because we had a stop and cease order, we don't, we didn't want to put any kind of more money into the project until we got the special use permit to use it.
Would that be something you'd be amenable to do?
That was something that, on the first application, we agreed to do.
Oh, right, yeah. And it was, what happened was, there was a cease and desist issued after the last hearing, we met with the town staff, actually met with the first selectman too, and we decided to hold off making that, because we weren't sure where that was gonna go, and then when we decided to come back in with a special use permit, as the chiefs indicated, it was something they'd agreed to in the prior application.
Where did you train in the interim?
We haven't, we haven't trained on the trailer since we've had this, the order to not to.
Does that affect any kind of readiness rating or anything that you have to maintain?
Well, yeah.
Sorry for the military term.
Well, yes, we train three times a month, we do in Old Mystic, and we usually try to get one training a month in on some sort of rescue aspect of it, and it's been difficult for us to do any kind of rope rescue or confined space rescue, because the trailer in question here, we do both rope rescue for high angle, we have a prop inside for confined space, so no, we haven't been able to do anything like that since we stopped using it on orders of the town.
One thing I would point out too, is in the rescue trailer, they do use a fog, it's this type of fog, if you've ever been to concert or Phantom of the Opera, it's basically, it's a non-toxic gas that just dissipates, it's designed to simulate smoke for the responders so that they can sense what it's really like, not be able to see directly in front of you, but again, it's 100% non-toxic.
Dissipate before it goes across the propeller?
Yeah, it's water based, yeah.
The other, the next one is that there's no deleterious impact to irretrievable environmental resources that would result, clearly there isn't any of that in here. All the applicable regulations in terms of state, federal and local codes and requirements have been met, and it's consistent with this Stonington Plan of Development, and I'll address that just briefly, the Stonington Plan of Conservation and Development talks about unifying the departments, particularly volunteer departments in the town, and this is one way to have a singular location for the training of all the fire departments in town. That was, that seemed to be, when I read the Plan of Conservation and Development, one of the bigger things, we have one over here, we have one over here, how many do we need, how can we best utilize single locations to service all of those?
Simplify.
Right, exactly, and that's what this would be. With regard to the standard, and this is probably less for the commission, but for the members of the public who may not be in favor of this application, but in reviewing the transcript from the last hearings, there was a lot of speculation about what could go wrong, a lot of speculation or hypotheticals about things without any empirical evidence in there, and I think this commission knows well enough that in order to make those claims, you have to have substantial evidence to back them up. What is substantial evidence? It's either expert testimony, factual testimony, not conjecture or hyperbole or whatever, it has to be fact-based, empirical, so that you can test it, and it can't be supported by speculation, and that's not a grounds for denial, and I think the commission is well aware of it. So I think with that, I've mostly concluded my presentation, if there's other questions from the commission or...
I just want to, for the record.
You just come up to the podium and stay with them, don't mind, it just makes it easier when we're trying to figure out who is talking what.
Sure. Ken Richards, Fire Chief, Old Mystic Fire Department.
Evening, Chief.
Thank you. I just wanted to, for the record, it isn't like this, we're talking about other departments using the site, most of the departments in the room here tonight, all of the departments in the room here tonight have used that training site for training with us. I would say the majority of the departments other than Old Mystic use it at the most two to three times a year, I just don't want to get the impression to the commission that this is being used three and four times a week for other departments, it's not. We use it as Old Mystic, our trainings are on Monday nights, but most of the, all the departments in the room tonight that have used it, we're talking at the most three times a year, they come over to use it, so it isn't like it's a revolving door.
where it's being used five and six times a week. I just didn't want a false narrative to get out there, that it's being used consistently all the time.
Can I just ask you a couple of questions along that line? So, when you say the other departments, you mean the other departments within the town of Stonington?
Yes, ma'am.
Pocatuck, and those are the only departments?
No, ma'am.
Not, okay, so, other departments in state, in the region?
Most, most of the departments, other than Old Mystic, are the ones within the town of Stonington. The other department that uses it probably twice a year is North Stonington, they come down to use it, instead of traveling up to Willametteck, or, but it's most, most of the time when North Stonington comes down, it's, it's for car fire training, or like our propane prop training. They've used the trailer once or twice, but...
Don't you also get, though, I mean, something out of that, even though it's an out-of-town department, when they're working with you under mutual support, isn't, isn't that training for mutual support as well?
Absolutely.
That, that they understand the communications protocols?
Absolutely.
And, and all the interoperability issues that, that come into play when you are using mutual support? So, North Stonington does respond to fires, and Stonington, do they not?
Any, any area in the Old Mystic Fire District that doesn't have a hydrant in it, any non-hydrant area, North Stonington automatically gets dispatched with the Old Mystic Fire Department with one tanker to come in to support us for water supply.
Although they, they don't really belong to this town proper, they respond?
Absolutely, on a regular basis. Any, any area that's, is not supported by hydrants in the Old Mystic Fire District, North Stonington comes in on one side, we have Wicked Quack on another side, Quambog on another side, Center Groton from Groton on the other side, it's...
Is it fair to say that the people that do use it, or the departments that do use it, that are external to our geographic perimeter, are departments that, that you engage in mutual support with?
All of them, all of them that have used it as our mutual aid partners.
So, is this different use by various departments than when we were talking about the fire, the fire trailer?
Yes.
Where you had other areas within the state come in, is that correct?
Right, the, the live burn trailer is no longer on site, we took it off, it's gone.
But at that time, you had other departments from other parts of the state, and now you're saying that, no, because we've limited, you're limiting...
The only time we had...
These other trailers...
The only time we had departments from other parts of the state in that area is when we did, like, a technical rescue technician program, would open it up, and we'd have other departments that didn't have the opportunity to go up to Windsor Locks at the state fire academy. That's when we'd bring in an outside firm to actually teach the program. We did trench rescue there, rope rescue, et cetera, but people from other areas, other than right close by to us, that's far and few between.
And do the other departments pay you to do this?
They, we do charge other departments when they come in, they pay for, like, the propane that we use, and if we have to provide an instructor, or two instructors there to, to run it, we charge them a fee for our instructors while they're there using the, using the property.
Okay, and then, my other question is, so you indicated you, you usually train on Monday nights, and I think your application said two nights, between 6:30 and 9:30, and then on Saturdays?
Saturdays are far and few between.
Okay, so, and then, when the other departments from the other surrounding fire departments come in, the other people, is that inclusive of your one night? You do it with them, they don't do it independently?
Sometimes they do it with us, and other times, they might be down on a Tuesday or a Wednesday. Tuesday and Wednesday seem to be the oddball nights, if like, North Stonington likes to do it on Tuesday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday. North Stonington, their training night is Wednesday, so if they come down, like, twice a year, it's usually on a Wednesday night.
So, is it fair to say that, you know, throughout the entire year, we're talking 15 times this is going to happen? Is that fair to say?
I would, for outside agencies?
No, just total.
Total.
No, no, I don't think so.
Give me the number, because it's not, that's not it.
We were talking just for the...
Just for the trailer?
Just for the trailer training.
Just for the trailer training?
Oh, yeah, 15.
That's all we're talking about.
I'll go 15 for just the trailer training.
Total.
15 to 20, total, for just the trailer we're talking about tonight.
Okay.
Right, there, there is other training and stuff that goes on, but not necessarily even in the, it's in the building somewhere, right, in the firehouse, exactly.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question.
No, no, thank you.
All set? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Are you done with your presentation, sir?
I think I am, just looking over the map, make sure I got it all.
Okay, thank you.
Can we ask questions of the...
You, you get a chance, you will definitely get a chance to speak.
Well, I know we get a chance to speak, but I want to clarify for James.
You can, you can raise questions to the commission, and then we can direct them to the applicant. Any questions from the commission, any other questions?
Nope.
I had no additional comments beyond what was raised regarding the couple site plan items. The only thing that wasn't in my original packet that was sent out last, or on Friday, was that we did receive comments back from deep, and they said they had no concerns, so that's the only new addition to the, to the packet. Other than that, no questions or concerns from my, my department.
So, Clifton, can I ask you, can I ask Clifton a question?
Absolutely.
About planning and zoning?
Please.
So, I was just looking at the regs, thinking about, you know, our rewrite and everything, and this is an RA 20, and I am not seeing where this is even allowed, because this would be considered training, right, like a training facility, training. Is it, where, is it allowed by special permit? What part of the regs am I, am I missing it?
This, this actually falls under municipal facility.
It does, okay, thank you.
So, all, all zones are permitted, municipal facilities, all residential zones as a special use permit, and then, commercial zones, that would be a site plan application.
Well, we just established this is not a commercial operation.
No, it's a municipal facility.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, just a question, too, in terms of that issue. The Old Mystic Fire Department is created as a special, by a special act of the legislature, as a municipal entity, and it has taxing authority, too, so it clearly falls within the municipal application.
So, there is statutory protection?
Correct. And I, I will dig through my notes, but I have the Public Act that created it, and gives it the power to tax, and, and actually expand its geographic area.
While you're standing, if, if the commission were to establish a maximum number of periods for the trailer to be used in the course of a year, like 20, which is what the chief said, is the maximum number that would be used, is, is that a condition that, that the fire department could live?
Just for the trailer.
Just for the trailer.
I, I think the answer to that is no, simply because it's, it's just too difficult to tell all the time, and this is historical, we're not planning on expanding it, obviously, but we also don't know if things change when we'd be able to do that.
Well, you could come back.
I suppose you could, yeah, modify the permit, yeah.
Exactly, that's what you could do, based on your historical data.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. If there are no further questions, then I think we'll open it to public comment. And again, I would just, I would just ask, I want everybody to feel comfortable that they can say what they want to say, but we have a lot of people in the room, I don't know how many people want to speak, I will shortly, but that you please keep your remarks as brief as possible, to give everybody a chance to say what they want to say. That's what we're getting at, okay? Actually, I'll, I'll call on people, it's going to be in the order.
Nobody signed up.
Nobody signed up?
Nope.
Sir, please.
Hi.
I remember you from the last update.
Yeah, so my name's Jeffrey Wood, I live at 32 North Stonington Road, so, the butting property owner of the site. So, my wife couldn't make it tonight, she wrote a statement, if I, if I may read her statement before I read mine, is that okay?
Well, you know...
Or I could just submit it.
Well, you could, no, why don't you paraphrase it, and say what you'd like to say, and if you want to read it, if it's wonderful, feel free to read it, we don't have a lot of people to speak here.
Okay, so, I'll, I'll read it, her statement. Dear members of the Planning and Zoning Committee, thank you for allowing me to address you today regarding the fire department's request to use the training trailer on Main Street, Old Mystic. My name is Georgia Neri, I live at 32 North Stonington Road, placing my family and me directly next to the proposed site. We are here today to discuss the ongoing presence of the training trailer at the Old Mystic Fire Department. It has been two years since the initial planning and zoning meeting, and unfortunately, not much has changed. The trailer remains on-site, resembling a permanent structure, and today, we find ourselves discussing the same plan that was presented in 2023. We're not here to dispute the importance of the fire department, or the necessity of proper training for its personnel. We're here to reconsider whether the Old Mystic Fire Department parking lot is the right location for a training trailer, and whether the Old Mystic community is the appropriate setting for a fire, for the fire trailer. As residents and proud members of the wonderful community, we're concerned about the aesthetic and environmental impact of granting the special use permit. The Planning and Zoning Committee holds a vital responsibility in preserving the integrity of our community, while also considering its progress and growth. We ask that you take into account the concerns of the residents, and carefully weigh the long-term impact of allowing a training trailer at this location. Thank you for your time, so I've just...
Thank you very much.
It's from my wife.
We appreciate your comments, thank you.
Yep. So, so now to my own statement, that pleases you. Okay, so, my name's Jeffrey Wood, I live at 32 North Stonington Road, with my wife, who couldn't be present, two sons, Patrick and Liam, Patrick is 10 and Liam is 8, they had their first baseball game tonight, which is why they couldn't come. First and foremost, I want to express my deep appreciation for first responders and volunteer firefighters. They do an incredible job, and deserve strong community support, they carry out complex and dangerous tasks in a, in a fast-paced environment. But today's discussion is not about whether training should occur, it's how and where, specifically regarding this site at Main Street. This application contains several confusing and contradictory elements, and it's critical that the committee can separate fact from fiction, so you can make an informed decision. I'd like to take a few moments to review key aspects on the application. So, on the front page of the letter from Girati and Bonano, the applicant states an intent to quote "continue use of the site for fire rescue training," end quote. On the second page, the focus shifts to the rescue trailer, quote "the rescue trailer", which is the subject of this application, end quote, and then switches back to quote "continued use of the parcel," end quote. The ambiguity raises, raises a fundamental question, is the application for the land, the trailer, or both? These are distinct issues and should be evaluated separately, especially given the site's history. While the application claims quote "no changes or additions to the site," end quote, and quote "no new structures or construction proposed," end quote, this is contradicted by the presence of the red trailer. Sean, and I have a bunch of photos for you to, to look at. I only have three copies, so you might share them. Okay, that's okay. And apologies, it's not completely in order, so I have to skip around a bit, but I've labeled each one, so, there's section A, which is the neighborhood, section B is the trailer, C is water use, D is fire training activities, and E is other uses of the sites, okay? So, I'm going to skip around a bit, but they're all labeled. So, the red, the red training trailer is shown on, you know, B1, photo B1, B2, B3, B4, six, page six and seven, is the red trailer. Now, if you remember, that trailer...
Mr. Chairman, just as a point of work, and I, since I can't see what the gentleman is referring to, makes it a little bit difficult to be able to...
Can you look over each, otherwise?
If he doesn't mind, yeah, just, sorry.
Go over here, if you want.
Well, you can go ahead. So, so, as I was saying, no, they quote that no changes were made to the site, but this trailer only appeared in March of 2023, after being relocated from the Oral School. It does not even appear on their satellite photo that they submitted, right? And it was the subject of the previous application involving the two trailers, okay? The trailer's presence, form, and permanence represent, to all intents and purposes, a new structure. It's larger than all other approved structures on the property, the shed and the gazebo, and taller than all single-story residences in the neighborhood. Furthermore, the fire department was instructed to remove it on and around August of 2024, which they acknowledged. Yet it remains at the site and is not a singular part of the current application, or the special use permit, as it was for the previous application. Its inclusion here without a clear acknowledgement as being part of the application or part of the site raises its transparency issues. The application is mischaracterizing something that is clearly new to the site, as something that has been part of the site for 50 years. The application also contains further inconsistencies. Dry training claim, and now we're talking about the site, not the trailer, because the application's about the site, not the trailer. On page two, they claim dry training only, so if you skip to pages eight and nine, you'll see water use clearly documented, with hoses on page eight, and on the trailer itself on page nine. No flammable materials, they, they talked about this as well, again, is it the site or the trailer? The application says none are used, but photos D7, pages 13 to 15, show propane gas, as they acknowledged, and a simulated car fire. What I would like to point out about photo D8 on page 13, and D4, D9 on page 14, is that's, that's from my property, and there's a piece of, there's a log in front of that fire, and that's my property, so I can't even approach that area of my own property while this training, the fire training's going on. The training times, they claim that it's between 6:30 and 9:30, yet photo D1, page 10, that photo was taken at 10 past 10 at night, and they're still training, that was on 30th of October, 2023, the site wasn't cleared until 11:00 PM on a weeknight, and we had school and work the next day. Number of participants, the application cites approximately 15 people, but photos D13 to D, D12 to D13, and this is another thing that really needs to be considered by the committee, is the number of cars that are parked there, so there's over 20 cars crammed into that parking lot, how do they train when all those cars are there? Right, D12, 16 cars in photo, page 16, 16 and 17, 20 cars in the combined photos on the site. So, these inconsistencies suggest significant underreporting of impacts on the neighborhood, such as traffic, water use, and the environmental, incorrectly justifying the waivers that they have requested. But for now, let's just debate the merits of the application itself, ignoring for a moment what we've just highlighted in terms of inconsistencies. In the previous two public hearings about this, I've stated that the red trailer and the use of the site present significant problems for the community. The proposed development fails to meet multiple requirements in the zoning regulations, and its approval would be inconsistent with longstanding protections for the neighborhood character, design harmony, environmental standards, as well as the use of lighting. So, I cite zoning regulation 50... So I cite zoning regulation fifteen-two-seven of the Stonington Regulations. The proposed use shall be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the district and not hinder or discourage the appropriate development and use of adjacent land buildings, not impair value thereof. The trailer, as I've pointed out, is plainly out of scale and character compared to the neighborhood structures and historic homes documented in photos A one to ten on the front pages of these photos. These homes are in direct vicinity of the site. Many are abutting homes. Yet the two sets of photos couldn't be further in form and character from one another. We would clearly lose value on our homes. When we bought the property at thirty-two North Stonington Road in two thousand and fifteen, I asked the agent, "How often is that firehouse used?" They stated that most of the use actually comes out of Cowhill Hill Road Station, which is a few miles down the road, and it continues to this day. Most of the calls come from that station. However, if there was a clear indication of a training facility abutting the property, we would have thought long and hard about purchasing. Lighting violations. Lighting should be designed and installed to be fully shielded, emitting no light above the horizontal plane of the luminaire. That's twelve-four-seven. So photo D three, and again, they claim that you can't see anything from our property. D three, this is from our front yard. That is floodlighting that's on every night of the year. Right? And you can see it through the trees. And it shines directly into our living room. So even with the claimed tree covers, and that pines, by the way, so they don't lose their greenness.
Where is that light?
That light, that, no, that light has been installed in twenty-twenty-three on the pole outside of the site. So that's another new addition to the site. Okay? There are also mounted floodlights on the trailer, and you'll see those in operation on page nine, C three, the mounted floodlights that directly go into our home. And they're run by a generator. And so the decibel rating of the generator is eighty to a hundred from our property when they're training. So just based on these two things alone, and there are legal justifications for this, I cite them in my statement. I'll just submit it. So Saint Joseph's School, P N Z Commission's one-seven-six, the Pauley Court five-seventy, and Irwin versus Planning and Zoning Commission two-forty-four, six-nineteen, ninety-nine-eight. So finally, the Connecticut Supreme Court has defined private nuisance as follows. A private nuisance exists only when one is injured in relation to the right which he enjoys by reason of his ownership of an interest in land. A private nuisance is non trespassory invasion of another's interest in the private use and enjoyment of the land. Again, I want to go back to photos C one and C two. The fire hoses. They are powerful fire hoses that are sprayed, not on the site, but into our property. Right? I was struck by one of these hoses while I was mowing the lawn. No one alerted me that this would be happening that day. I flagged down the firefighters, and they just pointed it in the other direction. I also have this on video of them firing into our property, if you'd like to see it. And then for the fire prop training, again, that's on D eight, page thirteen. This is hazardous, in my view. That fire is right next to some wooden pellets. On the night in question there, so if you look at D ten, they lit a flare next to wooden pellets, next to a propane gas. So that's the flare next to the wooden pellets. Right next to our property. And that log there, that's our property line, right there, right in front of that photo. As a community, we should strive to have the best, okay, just to close. This is a small parcel of land, and only seventy percent of it is useful. It's only one-point-one-six acres. Seventy percent is point-eight acres, something like that. It's open and frequently accessed by a scout troop, families, dog walkers, runners. The Stoning PD uses it all the time for patrol. It's even served as a hydration station during public events for running and other events. The application does not acknowledge the expanded use of this land for all these other activities. And so there's a bunch of photos here of all the other activities, including the scout meetings. I just want to point out this one. This is the final one. There's a family just running around in the parking lot next to that unsecured trailer, which has been unsecured for two years. Right? This is the scout troop meetings on the previous, they're just children running around the site, the open sites. As a community, we should strive to have the best training facilities for our first responders. And we've been now talking about this ill-equipped piece of land for, in the middle of a residential zone for two years. When it was the nineteen-sixties, this was perfect. It was in the middle of a farm, and the number of firefighters were much less than the forty-plus that are on the roster today. But we don't have to search for, so far, we don't have to go to Willimantic or the other place, which we can't remember.
Windsor.
Windsor. There's already something close by that's been approved for all the towns that want to use something. It's better. It's available in Groton. This is the application. It's from two thousand and nineteen, and it's been approved. I'll submit this as well. It's located far from homes. It has the full support of the Old Mystic Fire Department. The letter of support is in the front page. I submitted those plans at the last hearing and resubmit them here. The facility is close by, already approved, and appropriate for the scale and type of training of all the towns that want to use it. And, you know, as I was saying, you know, lead yard training there, porketup training there, North Stonington training there, Mystic training there, they're all here, right? And there's already a large approved site for their training. Given the zoning inconsistencies, the public impact, the incomplete application, and the availability of an alternative, I respectfully ask the committee to deny this special use permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this application? Anyone else wish to speak on this application? Yes, sir. Just state your name, please.
Yes, Marcel De Frayne, Sixth North Stonington Road. I have lived in Old Mystic for forty, nearly forty years, and the fire department is my neighbor, even though I live in Groton. I'm in the last house on the northeast corner of Groton, and my property is approximately, I'm told, about two hundred yards from the fire department property, even though it crosses the Witford Brook. I really appreciate Mr. Wood's analysis and detail-oriented critique of the application. I was not aware of this hearing until a few days ago, and so I did not get a chance to scrutinize the application in detail, but he has done that, and I think he points out a lot of questionable aspects to it. When I spoke at the hearing two years ago for this, and I did not speak against the proposal. There seemed to be a lot of interest on the commission at the time to find another location. So my first question is, what happened to those efforts? What was considered? Who made the choices, and why were they disregarded? This is, as he's pointed out, a residential area. I can see the trailer from my deck. I can see some of the training, depending on the time of year. And one thing that surprised me, I think, and Ken and I have known each other for years. We used to be neighbors in Old Mystic. I was surprised to hear that they will continue to do Jaws of Life, because that's a whole other operation. I mean, the lights and the noise that comes from tearing up cars on that location, I haven't seen it in quite some time, but when it happens, it's quite disruptive. I mean, you know, if you're somebody who has to be in bed early, or an old person like some of us, nine-thirty going on ten and after is a pretty inappropriate time for that kind of activity. The Jaws of Life, if you've never seen it or heard it, is noisy. One of the issues, and I assume that's still a concern, is that for a time, and I thought the department dealt with this, but that after the cars were burnt and then torn open, they were left there for a long time. I think that has stopped. But again, in terms of future use, once the commission approves this, having to, you know, reconsider additional uses and for people to make a protest, this is a time to make a choice of whether that location is going to be an industrial use, which is what it is. Even though it may be only ten, fifteen times a month, it is an industrial use. It's noisy. It's smoky. I understand, I was somewhat pleased to hear that the burn trailer, which was a real point of contention last time, was not part of the application. But given the description that I've heard tonight of some of the activities and the idea that, again, what, the one thing that struck me in the presentation was you told us what it wasn't. But if you didn't read the application, what will the training consist of? What will happen on that spot? And the fact that Jaws of Life is going to continue there, to me, that's a concern, because it is, it's a messy process. And I remember going out on my deck thinking, occasionally, by the way, I don't know if it still occurs, but the helicopters, the rescue helicopters have landed on that location. Yeah, lifestars landed on location. One night, I heard all this noise, and I heard, saw the lights, and I went on my deck, and it was probably ten o'clock. And they were tearing apart a car with the Jaws of Life, and it was pretty noisy. And I think if I were living any closer, as some of the other abutters do, you know, I have small children, or I have an elderly parent living there, I think this just is not an appropriate use. And so I am concerned about what was done to find other locations. And I think essentially, that's, I will just come down to the notion that there is simply, there has to be better places to do this when you have within a hundred yards of that property, probably twenty, thirty houses. And it strikes me that this is the time for the commission to insist on a more appropriate location. You know, I have, I consider to be a supporter of the fire department. They have assisted me in many ways, in medical issues, medical emergencies, various support. And I've always tried to be cooperative and helpful to the department. I just think I'm on a different side on this issue. And the final point I would make is that there are only two of us speaking about it tonight. But at the hearing two years ago, it must have been, your records, your minutes would show, there probably were ten of fifteen people who spoke against it at the time. Maybe it was a different time of year. Maybe, you know, there were some, maybe summer residents. But the fact that only two of us are speaking in opposition to it tonight is not an indication of the sentiment in Old Mystic. I think there is much stronger sentiment. That's just my opinion, but I think the fact that so many people spoke last time would bear that out. Thank you for your time. Okay.
Anyone else wish to speak? Do the applicant wish a rebuttal time?
Thank you. The commission members are so good to offer me that exhibit. Thank you. Let me start off by addressing the issue of the lack of people opposed to it. It may mean that most of the people who were opposed to it last time, and that's when I read the record, it was the burn trailer. That was the issue. And there's no burn trailer this time, and so they're not opposed to it. But I don't think we should extrapolate anything. We need to look at the record that's before this commission in terms of that. With regard to the comments by Mr. Wood as to some of the other issues, well, the first issue about being inconsistencies. There's nothing inconsistent about the cover letter to the application or the application itself. This is an application for a special use permit of a specific activity. So you need to identify the activity, and you need to identify the site, because the activity is site-specific. So by saying that we're going to use the rescue trailer on this site does not make it inconsistent. It's frankly, actually consistent. The rescue trailer is going to be at this particular site. You're going to meet all the requirements for that, and therefore is site-specific. With respect to his comment about the noise and some of the other activities there, the reason we're here tonight before this commission is because we withdrew the application at the commission's request in two thousand and twenty-three, and a cease and desist order was issued. That's what this application is addressing, nothing else. If the neighbors have some issues with some of the other things that are on that property, they need to talk to the zoning enforcement officer and have her either investigate or issue a cease and desist or give her blessing to it. But what's before this commission is not anything else that's occurred on there. The Jaws of Life, I can tell you, they've been doing that for years. If there's lighting that affects one of the neighbors, that's not a reason to deny this, because it's not lighting that's associated with the application, the trailer itself. The other issue in terms of the height of the structure, the zoning requirements indicate nothing above twenty, excuse me, thirty-five feet for that area. That's fairly standard, and it's related to fire safety for that. The trailer is twenty-five feet, so it's below the maximum required, excuse me, the maximum limit on height in there. And I can tell you right now, it's not taller than the station across the street. With regard to the comments about, from the realtor, I don't know how to address those other than say, it's laughable that, you know, that's the reliance on her. We wouldn't have bought this property because the realtor told us, oh, they really don't do it. It's a firehouse, guys. I can tell you that, you know, if there's a fire, they respond. Trucks leave that. Trucks probably blow their horn, et cetera. But that's not a basis to deny this, because that's something that he did, and knowing this was a firehouse. We're not talking, you know, there were some comments in there about, you know, what's next, whatever. Nothing is next. This is it. This is what's here before the commission. And that's what the commission can approve. Again, I'll go back to the issue of the lighting or the water. Those were for other activities that were on the property. They're not in conjunction with this. If there's an issue with that, if somebody thinks we're not in compliance with the zoning regulations, the answer is to go to the zoning enforcement officer, file a complaint, and have her investigate and make a determination at that point. Or pick up the phone and call one of us. Because I think everybody from our hearing tonight, even from the people who are opposed to this, they find overall that the department is a good neighbor, and we want to be a good neighbor. So we're willing to listen to people. One of the reasons there's no longer a fire trail on that is because we hurt everybody the first time, all right? All we're proposing is for the rescue trailer, and that's what is the subject of this. In regard to the comment by Mr. Wood as to the decibels, there's no scientific evidence before this commission that would tell us whether or not his statement that it's eighty to a hundred decibels on his property, in terms of the volume of the noise or the level of the noise, we just don't know that. And that gets back to my comment in this case, as I cited in the letter, that you have to have scientific evidence for something like that, a noise monitor or whatever, because otherwise, it's just, ah, you know, I think it's too loud. I think a Led Zeppelin concert's too loud, you know, but hey, you know, plenty of people go to them. The photos in here that were taken all depict activities other than what we're talking about for the rescue trailer. The rescue trailer was there prior to the Oral School lease, and it came back. It is not necessarily a new structure, nor is any new constructor. It's a structure on the property. When the cease and desist was issued, we were informed, come back. When the cease and desist was issued, we were informed, come back, get your special permit. That's the way you're going to apply for this, and that's what we did. So the fact that that sat there for two years during this application process and, and the review, and we meant, we fought the cease and desist initially, and so there's a time. But nothing was done with it, because that's generally what happens when cease and desists are issued if there isn't a health and sa, an immediate and imminent health and safety violation that could result. And because the trailer wasn't being used, there wasn't any. And the town took no steps to address that situation, because I assume that the town staff felt that there wasn't an immediate or imminent threat to public health and safety on that. So a lot of what we just heard isn't applicable to this particular application. And that's what we're here for tonight, the rescue trailer. And is it, under the terms of your regulations, sufficient to qualify for an approval from this commission? And I would submit to you that it is. If I could just have one more moment. So the, the, the issue of the water use, et cetera, these photos were all taken during a period of time that the rescue trailer was not being used. There was training going on on the property. We don't deny that. There's been training going on on the property since the department acquired the property back in sixty-one. If those are issues that neighbors have, this is not the basis to deny this. Those should be brought up independent of this application and addressed independently by both the zoning, zoning staff and, and this commission or the zoning board of appeals, as the case may be.
Question.
Sir, the picture showed two lights which appeared to shine across the property line into private property from the trailer. It's, are there lights on the trailer?
Yes, the lights, since we had complaints about the lights going out of the property, we've readjusted the lights so they're straight down. They used to be on like an angle, like a fifteen degree angle. Now they're, they're straight down to the ground.
They make lights that are shielded. I mean, you can shield lights so that they, they don't, you know, the, the foot candles are, are retained within the property limits.
The other light that's being talked about was put up as a security light.
But let's stick with the trailer for a second, okay? Can those lights be shielded?
I, I, I think, in, in my experience.
It seems reasonable.
Yeah, no, I don't, and I don't, I was just going to say.
Because the pole light could be shielded.
Right, yeah.
Correct.
Typically, those, in my experience.
I would assume, yeah.
Sorry, Chief. Well, but see, I mean, would you accept that as a reasonable condition if, if the commission were inclined to approve this, that, that?
Certainly.
Okay. I'm not saying they are.
No, I understood, but I, I think those are issues.
You're both conditions that are unacceptable.
Correct, and, and those are issues that we can a, address too, in, in terms of.
Right.
Can I ask a question? A few questions. Are you finished?
More or less, well, only after I answer your question.
So when was this trailer put on this property?
In twenty twenty-two.
January sixth.
Twenty-three.
January sixth, twenty twenty. And when was the cease and desist order issued?
The first application in the fall, I believe, of twenty twenty-three, the cease and desist came some point after, I think it might have been early twenty twenty-four.
In twenty twenty-four?
Right.
Yeah, Lynn, I don't, I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay. Because.
Would have been after the previous application was heard.
Right.
Okay.
After that was withdrawn.
You'll get a chance to speak with him.
After that was withdrawn, I want to say around, I'd be worried, again, I don't know the exact date.
Okay.
But it would have gone out in, within fifty, thirty days of all of that.
And none of these activities have taken place since, I'm going to say February, let's say the date of the cease and desist. Let's just call it February twenty twenty-four.
So when?
All these pic, these pictures that we just saw.
No, those, so those activities, so that's why I want to be clear about this. This, this is specific, this application is specific to the use of the trailer. There's other activities going on on the property throughout the course of the year. That's what I think Mr. Wood is, is complaining about, that, you know, we've taken, he's got pictures of them doing other things on the property. And, and that seems to be part of the issue, but it's not relating to what we're proposing the use of the trailer for, which is what's before the commission tonight. I mean, I hope that addresses your question.
I understand what you're saying, but I just want to, I just want to, like, question you.
Right, and, and when, when this issue came before the commission and, and it was withdrawn, and then there was some back and forth between myself and, and staff, those other issues weren't raised by anybody, and nor were there any complaints, as far as we know, filed with the town over some of the other activities. So when we reviewed this and decided whether or not we would take an appeal to the zoning board of appeals based on that, or, or go in and, and reapply for the special, I want to say special per, special use permit, those other activities continued, because the cease and desist is specific to the two trailers being on the site. One of them, which we removed in compliance with that, and the other, by making an application to the town, essentially, no further enforcement action was taken as it related to the trailer being on the site.
Do you have a special use permit for using the property in the way that you have been using it, regardless of the trailer used? Do you have a special permit for that?
So it depends, I mean, it's, it's a lot, a lot of the uses of the lot right now, such as parking, et cetera.
No, no, for the things that we've been talking about, let's, let's not cut hair from parking.
No, well.
Do you have a special permit for the uses that you have been using?
No, they, they've never, it's never been required.
Okay, I just, I just wonder.
Yeah.
I'm just asking a question. Okay, and then I do distinctly remember that we did talk about other sites, looking at other sites, and you have had approval for Groton. Can you, and because you have brought it up, saying that this is the best place for your people, and you have said Willimantic and Windsor Lock, not mentioning Groton.
Right.
Okay. Why not use Groton?
It's no longer available for, for use by any other departments. That was, go ahead, Chief.
The Groton site, the Groton site was taken off the table for use for training.
Why?
Due to the close proximity to the town hall annex.
Which, it's an eight acre lot, right?
I, I can't remember what, how.
It is, it was in the letter.
Yeah, no, that, that, that site is no longer available. It was, it was taken off the table.
Okay.
It's in the city of Groton. Yeah, well, they placed so many restrictions on the use of it that it basically made it untenable for all the departments to use it. So it, it's been withdrawn. So this, hence, back here, otherwise, because we can't take, couldn't take either trailer to Groton. At that, at the time, they brought these trailers back to the site, Groton was already off the books.
The Groton, the, the site at, at the Groton site was proposed for a much larger use than what we're using the current site at Station One in Old Mystic. The, the site in Groton was proposed to be at, the plan was is to make it pretty much like another Eastern Connecticut fire training school. It was going to have a, a three to four story, concrete burned building on it, et cetera. It's going to be a, a pretty heavy-duty site, and it just got brought off the table. It would, orange, apples and oranges, as far as what that Groton site was going to be used for and what we're using Station One for. You're welcome.
Further questions, please?
Yeah.
Guys want to address the issue of late nights? Our, our application says it'll go until nine thirty. We have some pictures of you going, and you'd be willing to put a cap on that?
Well, the, the pictures that were shown tonight, that, that's not an, an every week occurrence. I mean, I would, I don't know for a fact, I was not, I don't believe I was there that night, but I would say the picture, it doesn't show active training going on. It was probably after they got done, they were cleaning up. I mean, our training officer is here tonight, he could address it better than I can. But I mean, normally for us in Old Mystic, we're, we're packed up and, and back in the building by nine, nine-thirty at the latest.
Well, that raises another question, because if you're not going to be there when other departments are there and issues like this occur, there has to be some custodian who is responsible from your department, because nine thirty means nine thirty.
We are, we are there. Nobody uses that site without a representative from the old fire department.
So, so then you can take responsibility for the fact that people were there after nine thirty, and that can't, if a special permit is issued with, with conditions and hours of operation, then, then the lights have to be off at nine thirty and everybody's got to be gone.
And we can live with that. Look at the nine thirty curfew.
The point I'm trying to make is that that's not an everyday occurrence.
Okay, but it can't happen at all. That's, that's the point.
I understand that.
You know, it, it can't happen at all.
I understand that.
Okay.
I'm just saying, it's, doesn't happen as often as what might be made out to happen.
Okay. I, I, I guess I would just have to repeat. If you establish hours of operation, you know, it's, it would be like serving a drink to somebody at a bar at two oh one AM, and I don't know what time bars close. But, but if they close at two and, and you're still serving people at two thirty, that's not a good thing. If the hours are the hours, period.
We, we, we can live with the curfew at nine, nine thirty and, and make sure that we enforce it too.
Any other questions on part of the commission at all?
I, I just want to be sure, so two to three trainings a month, that's specifically on the trailer or using the trailer, and that's where the approximately fifteen people.
Correct.
Would you cap that fifteen people to, because can it be fifty?
Well, maybe.
It's hard for us to cap it. In our department, we have thirty-five active volunteers. We might have a mon, it depends on the training. If it's a training that everybody's excited about, we might have twenty-five, thirty people on that site.
Then could you cap it at thirty?
It's tough. I mean, what do you do if you cap it at thirty?
Well, it's, it's tough for us.
And we have thirty-five volunteers show up.
Because we can't, we can't have a hundred people out there. We can't have a hundred people out there.
It's like the dog wants to.
You have to, you have to manage this thing.
I'd like to ask one more question, too. In complete transparency, because I do feel that this part of the discussion has, has kind of been, you know, splitting hairs. So fifteen to twenty trainings using this trailer, how many trainings a month using the lot?
It, it depends on the, on the month.
Okay, but.
During, during the winter time, we hardly use it at all.
Okay, tell me during.
During the summer time, we have, we have three trainings a month for Old Mystic. We have, some months, if it's the fourth Monday, we'll have four, three trainings. So, I mean.
So four trainings a month from Old Mystic? And then how, and then how about all the other departments? One training a month for them?
I would say we average.
It's hard for me to give an answer, because we haven't been able to use it so long.
Right, we haven't been able to use it for, since we have this.
I'm sure you can, can remember, you seem to remember back to nineteen sixty-one. I mean, what, what, what are we talking here?
You know, it, it appears, I, I, you know, I think you got a very, I think you got a very good question.
And it appears that, that, you know, there almost is no management plan for this. I, I, I understand that, that some of this is, is hard, because you're dealing with volunteers. And, you know, it, it, you've, you've got to make it work for the volunteers and their schedules. And, and we all greatly appreciate what these dedicated volunteers do. Don't think for a minute that none of us do. We do. But I, I think your application would be helped tremendously by a management plan with the schedule, so that you could answer the question of how many people, how many times a month? And, 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 you know, a permit could be considered, you know, that, that defines it, rather than an open-ended permit that, that would allow a hundred people out there. Because, you know, we want to give you, we want to consider what you, what you need, but what you need has not really been fully defined.
Mr. Chairman, may I address that?
Yeah, please.
I, I think what I'm going to ask for is if we could, your next regularly scheduled hearing is when? The fifteenth? If we continued the hearing to that date, and we will come back with a, I, I don't want to ask the members.
That's what I was going to suggest.
Yeah, yeah, to, to do this off the cuff.
And we'll come back with something in writing that says, here's what we can do, here's what we can live with, and if the commission can.
Makes all the sense in the world.
Right, okay.
Makes all the sense in the world.
Fair enough.
But please make it comprehensive to the entire lot.
Right, well, that's what we're going to try to flesh out, because I mean, right now, I don't want anybody.
I think you put the word a good point, only related to the trailer.
Only thing up for consideration.
Yeah, just to the application, to the trailer.
Right. But we, we.
That's what we're considering.
No, absolutely, that's true, yeah.
Okay.
So the, the management plan would only be dedicated to things happening at the trailer, not anything else on site.
Thank you.
Well, let me. Okay, if we're just talking, I mean, about the trailer, twelve, a cap of twelve per month would be more than adequate.
Twelve per month?
Oh. Are you doing this, Tom? Oh, that's not.
That's not what we said.
I, I think.
I, I think our first approach, two weeks, see you in two weeks.
Take, take the two weeks and give us a comprehensive schedule. Just regarding the trailer.
Just regarding the trailer, yeah.
Which is what the application's for. Okay. Okay, so with that in mind, motion to continue? Oh, any other further, I guess, feedback? You, did you, would you like to say something else? You, the hearing is going to be continued.
Yeah, no, there's something about the timing of the trailer's use, I think there's a question about that. So it arrived, well, both trailers arrived on the state, around the state of time, but yet there's no physical evidence of that date either. But it was around January, February of twenty twenty-three. So they didn't have a special use permit for the use of that trailer, but they used it, I believe, on the March of twenty twenty-five. There's a report on it at the last public hearing, when they used the burn trailer and the rescue trailer. Ironically, a nine-one-one call was placed for that use. So after, after that, they were asked to use a spec, to apply for a special use permit. And then I, I believe it was Lead Yard Fire Department came down and used the trailer after they were asked not to use it. And then we had to call the town up again to say, hey, they're using it even though they, they don't have a permit to use it. I think this happens all the time, like, they say sorry afterwards. You know, at the, at the first public hearing, I stated that the, the stairs were a hazard, and they were given twenty-four hours to make it safe after that public hearing. And as we've heard tonight, they've never done that for two years. And kids, I've seen kids on those stairs. Like I, I say, I guess, I've got a photo of the kids that went on the stairs, but I observed kids on those stairs, my kids can go on those stairs. There's no control on the trailer at all. Just want to confirm those dates about.
That concern will be reiterated.
Yeah, I just want to confirm about the usage after the cease and desist order by a different fire department.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, if there's no one else that, yes, I'm sorry.
I'm just, I'm going to hand to the, the request for a continuation.
Okay.
I think the attorney has, had made a, an important point, that this is, hearing is considering the trailer only. I think for planning commission, presumably, you're taking a longer view, and, and you can look beyond just the limits of this. I think we've been talking about the activities of the trailer. But granted, there are other activities that go on there, so it's, it's, it's cumulative. You've got whatever else is going on on the other nights in the, the Jaws of Life.
Not the subject of this application.
I, I understand that. So, but what I would request is you're considering whether this is adding on to what's already problematic for the neighborhood, Jaws of Life or whatever the activity. I think the commission should ask for a site use plan, a details of what exactly goes on, on that on a monthly basis, so you can weigh this as on top of that.
That's really a zoning enforcement issue, sir. That's, that's not an issue for the commission.
You can't, you can't ask what other, other ac. You can't, you can't ask what other, other activities go on in that?
That's a zoning enforcement, that's a zoning enforcement issue.
Okay, um, I, that escapes me since, since what being requested would be additional activities to what already goes on that. And it seems to me this commission would want to be informed about what other activities.
I'm not saying we wouldn't like to know, but it's, it's the proper course of that inquiry would be from the zoning enforcement office.
You could ask the zoning.
We could ask the zoning.
Yes.
To provide you with, to ask, to request of them.
That's correct.
For a complete site use plan of what exactly happens there on a regular basis. Okay, well, that's fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no one else that'd like, who'd want to speak, yes, sir?
My name is Christian Anne Ready. I live in Stony Tewborough. I'm eighty years old. Do you think for a moment that any one of these volunteers would do anything malicious or non-intent? Do you realize what you're dealing with? These people are volunteers. I mean, get on the ball here. If you want some concessions for lights, put some trees up. If you want concession with noise, deal with it. But for Christ's sake, you're beating everybody up here.
We're not beating anybody.
I, I don't mean to be rude, I'm sorry, but I'm just sitting there listening.
We're not, we're not beating, just, sir, let me, let me just say.
Sure.
You know, the, the application was heard before. I, I think that, that wisely they chose to remove the, the burn portion of this. And they're back for the rescue trailer, rescue trailer only. That's what's in front of us. What we try to do is, is deal with some of the issues that are brought up that, that don't comply with our regulations.
You're beating that horse here. They're fired and they wanted to protect you.
Sir, we're not beating anybody. We're not beating anybody.
Ask the audience. Ask the audience. And I don't mean to be rude to you, sir, but you wonder why you can't get volunteers' fire departments?
And I'm not trying to be rude to you. What we're trying, what we're trying to do is, is to be as fair as we possibly can to all sides.
All right, but you understand what I'm saying. You need to fire them.
You can feel assured of that.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? And again, I want to reiterate my thanks to the volunteer servants here. I wore a uniform for a long time. And, and I know what a difficult job it is. And, and I was trained in the fire service at Sheneep Air Base. It's a difficult job, a very, very difficult job. So I, I don't say that from the position of, of not having put on the bunker gear and actually walked into a fire. So I have tremendous empathy for what you do and how much training it takes. Having said all that, we want to make sure that this activity, to the extent possible, complies with our regulations. And to the extent possible is compatible with the lives of those that live in close proximity to it, and that's of concern to us as well. With that in mind, unless anyone else has anything to say about this, we have another application to hear, and I think we can continue this application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to continue this hearing for this application, P Z two five one one, S U P N C A M O M D.
A motion to continue. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lynn. Thank you, Lynn. Any discussion on the motion? Um, we, we do have an agreement that you'll come back with this management plan.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Application continues. We'll let the room clear for a minute and we'll hear the next item up for a public Okay, we're going to call back to order here. Next item on the agenda is item C under public hearings, H C. The application of C Research. Lynn, would you please read the legal act?
Yes, this is to open the public hearing for P Z two five one two, R A C Research Foundation. Zoning text amendment application for the creation of a marine research and education district, M R E D, floating zone.
Um, motion to open the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to open the public hearing for P Z two five one two, R A C Research Foundation.
Motion by Ryan to open the public hearing for item H C. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lynn. Thank you, Lynn. All, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, tonight, my name is Bill Sweeney. I'm a partner and a land use attorney at the law firm at Tobin Carberry. And as always, it's a pleasure to be here before you. I'm actually going to turn our presentation over to two individuals for some introductory remarks. At their request, I have with me tonight Chuck Sneddon, who is the former chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission here in Stonington. I also have Suzette Tybus, who is the president and CEO of Mystic Aquarium. They wanted to say a few words before I get into my presentation.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one member who recused herself from the session.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, staff. Ms. Gwern tonight's asking you to approve a text amendment for marine research education district. You'll forgive me if I stumble a little bit. It's been a long time since I've talked to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I talked from your chair for quite a few years. It was a lot easier than, than I realized standing up here. As you know, our lead presentation will be Mr. Sweeney. We also have Sergio Scherenzia and my wife Suzette. The aquarium has been a very important element to this community for fifty one years. In fact, we have a guy here from, from the aquarium who was here with a tool belt on when they built it and is still working for Mystic Aquarium, and he's here for your questions As I said, it's an important part of the community. And myself, the aquarium, our staff, really understands how rare this community is and how important the job that you do that keeps it this way. It's unbelievable that over hundreds of years, our little town has grown and evolved and become what it is. Zoning was established. Somebody can probably tell me the date when zoning was established.
Probably early fifties, right?
Yeah.
Nineteen sixty one.
Nineteen fifty one?
Sixty.
Sixty one, thank you.
They were, they were late to the table.
And since then, we've had rules and we've had commissions, and somehow this town has done what nobody else has done and have a coastal community that has places like world-class aquarium. We have the seaport. We have wonderful place to live and a lifestyle that I think very few of us would say is matched, certainly in Connecticut. So the fact that we're aware of that, we worked hard to decide whether to have a, use a floating zone, to make changes to the TC eighty, to make the aquarium conforming. Because currently, its operating is existing non-conforming. And somehow the town and the aquarium has still come up with a great community. It's very, very rare that you see automobiles queued to get into the aquarium or come out of the aquarium. They may be in line to get into the building, but very rarely we have a traffic problem that affects the entire community. And what we're asking for is essential for the planning that we're currently involved in and will complete a master plan without regard to this. We've been working on it for some time so that the future of the aquarium is clear to the, the staff, clear to the town, clear to the board of directors, and we have a couple of our board of directors here tonight. It's important to us that we get this right, and I know it's important to you that we get it right. The aquarium's not looking to become the next SeaWorld. They're not looking to expand greatly. That would be noticed by the community, that would be noticed by traffic. However, as it has, as the town has changed over fifty one years, so has the aquarium and the needs of our guests have grown. They're harder to please than they were fifty one years ago. The safety of the animals, the employees, is paramount in this future planning process. And without having clear boundaries that we feel this application sets, it's very difficult for us to do long-range planning, certainly to consider the financial aspects of some of the things that are necessary. Suzette's going to talk a little bit about the specifics of what is happening. To me, as a husband spectator, I can't believe the, the, in the years that we've been involved in it, helping a few seals has, has become a huge operation that involves multiple states and.
It isn't a problem.
It, it really is. But the facility, if you.
Recently in the news also.
If you get a chance, I'm sure Suzette will make it available to you, but to see some of the things that they're doing on a daily basis and wonderful scientists are working in closets or hallways to service these animals, to build the exhibits, they're really doing yeoman work there. And with some planning and some changes to the buildings, they'll be able to do it better, to accomplish more, and to make it better for our kids and our grandkids and to some of us, our great grandkids. Not me, I don't have any of those, but, you know, a lot of us, it, it's been an important part of, of my life for the thirty years I've lived here, and I think it's an important part of many of yours. And, and I just want to remind the commission a little bit about, we chose to use a floating zone. I happened to be here and was instrumental in the first floating zone and explain to you why floating zones made sense. When traditional zoning, you have a, you have a zone, you permit uses, and what's not permitted is not permitted. Well, the aquarium technically then is not permitted to be an aquarium on that site, and I think that doesn't make sense, and we all know it doesn't make sense. Floating zones were created because when I was asked to be on planning and zoning, I said, what are you, crazy? I don't want to do that job. And the first selectman at the time was Peter Dibble, and he said, Chuck, we have a problem. He said, we have these mill sites that were built years and years ago, and we have housing immediately around them that was workforce housing. People at the time these mills were built had to walk to work. They didn't have any other means of getting there. So we have mill site surrounded by residential. And of course, we made that a residential district, and that's why these mill sites are falling apart, because they're not permitted in the zone. A lot of them were brownfields, and we need something specific that we can drop down on that mill site, protect that residential area, and still be able to enable a developer who doesn't want to go in and spend millions of dollars on engineering and stormwater management and how many units of apartments can I put in it? And then go to the commission and say, well, that's not permitted there. We can't approve your application. And they've spent all that money to bring the application. So we created a floating zone so that with a site plan, here's what we envision, here's what we plan, we just need to know that the town wants that there. And once that site plan is approved, then sometimes piecemeal, the, the applicant can come and say, well, we need to redo this building. It's in our master plan, and now here is site plan where we've spent the money to do it and have a reasonable degree of understanding that it's going to be permitted. And it's a wonderful tool for very specific things. And I think the aquarium is, is built for that. If you took the TC eighty and said, we're going to permit aquariums and zoos, then you would really have a problem if somebody wanted to turn Old Mystic Village into a zoo, because it would be a permitted use, and you'd be hard set to turn it down. I don't know that you want other facilities like this in the TC eighty. But you might be able to create a zone that's specific for the aquarium with some understanding that over the years it may wiggle a little bit, but it's not going to double in size. It's, it's not going to become something different, and you're not going to be forced to approve other things in the zone. Spot zoning is not permitted. Floating zones are permitted, and that's why we ask for you to consider a floating zone, to consider the application that our team has worked hard on to present. I think it protects the town very well. I think it enables the aquarium to, within reason, consider future growth and be able to spend some money to, to establish site plans and a master plan for that. I remind you, we're not asking for a zone change tonight. We're asking you to create a zone for us so that we have some, some guidelines, some boundaries that the commission is comfortable with, so that we can create a master plan, come back to you with a zone change that fits regulation we're asking you to approve tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for that. It was a horrible comment. Helpful.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, good evening. My name is Suzette Tybus, and I am the president and CEO of the Mystic Aquarium. Very similar story to the case of Sarson here at fifty one years. Please don't do the math, but fifty one years ago, I opened the aquarium as one of the high school students that I was handing out carnations at the time, because they asked some of the high school students to come and open up the aquarium fifty one years ago. So I've become full circle here and now head of the Mystic Aquarium. So just, that's just a little bit of a fun fact for this evening. But the entire aquarium and community, from our board of trustees, Bill Middleton and Rob Valenti are here in support. Our world-class veterinary team and animal husbandry team, our educator, educators, our research scientists, facility staff, we are determined to continue to set the standards for our animals, our guests, and our internal staff and community at large. Not by expanding per se, but raising the bar and raising the tide of education, research, and conservation. Our hope that someday we could realize a world-class animal rescue. And just for some information, you heard about Chappie, and unfortunately, Chappie did not make it. I don't know why Chappie found its way to Chapel Street in New Haven. We've got a lot of press around that. But to add to that, Chappie is one of the eighteen hundred seals and mammals that we rescue, rehabilitate, and release. And how far is that expansion? We're from New York to Connecticut, to Rhode Island. That's as large of the coastline, one thousand miles that we, we service, and we're the only entity that does that. So that's really key to know, because I think what people, when they look at the Mystic Aquarium, they look at the Mystic Aquarium as the number one tourist district for the state of Connecticut, and we are. Eight hundred thousand people come through our doors. So the realization that we can keep this campus open and be good neighbors and serve the community of the town of Stony and Mystic and the fifty to sixty percent of people that come through our, our, our doors, and it's important. We also responded to two hundred and ninety seven sea turtle strandings and forty, forty six sea turtle, sea turtles that we rehab. All this information is key for all of you to know, because we at the Mystic Aquarium is so much more. But we're landlocked there, within our confines. We have offices that are underneath our bleachers at the Marine Theater. I mean, these are things that we'd like to do constantly to make sure that this Mystic Aquarium stays refreshed and engaging, like the exhibits that we'd like to do. So this is all part of what we want to realize with the Mystic Aquarium. Our community impacts. We support Stonington schools and students providing free admission and educational program at the aquarium for all Stonington High, Stonington schools, high school and schools. We support student development by offering high school internship opportunities, participating in STEM and career day events. We host town events at our mill center, hosting events like the Energy Fair, Toastmaster Sessions. We lead local cleanup efforts in Stonington. So these are a lot of things that we do outside of being this tourism district. We partner with local nonprofits, Avalonia Land Conservancy, Cleanup Sound. We partner with local nonprofits, Avalonia Land Conservancy, Cleanup Sound and Harbors and the Mystic Seaport. So these are a lot of our local nonprofits. But I want to talk about the little bit of the economic impact that the Mystic Aquarium has. We employ more than 270 people, I think we're over to 300, how many volunteers?
Thousand.
Yes, thousand volunteers at the Mystic Aquarium. Spend more than $15 million annually on goods and services. Again, that's a big number, $15 million. We welcome again 800,000 visitors annually, including 55% to 60% from out of state. We provide complimentary admission to EBT cardholders, admitting over 100,000 people from Connecticut through the program in 2024. So we're just, want to give you that information and saying that we are good neighbors, we want to continue to be good neighbors, and with the help of this floating zone, we can realize some of the opportunities that we could do within the Mystic Aquarium confines. So thank you so much. It's, it's just a pleasure to be here in front of you. I sat right there for many, many years as Chair, Chair of the Police Commission, so I think Chuck and I have done our civic duty and will continue to do our civic duty.
Civic duty.
Yeah, but thank you very much. It's just been a real pleasure and opportunity.
Thank you.
Phil, would you like to take over?
Thanks, Suzette. Alan Smith? Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the courtesy granted to us to allow both Chuck and Suzette to provide some context to the application. I don't have the exciting part of the presentation. I, I've been asked to actually deal with the application, the nuts and bolts of it itself, to actually go through the proposed text with you this evening. But before I do that, there are some points I want to cover, particularly about your legal charge and the things that you're charged by statute and your regulations to consider. In fact, the first thing I want to share with you is the proposal that you have before you, and I know you've looked at the text, it's not a new idea. In fact, the concept of a floating zone district for the aquarium dates back at least to 2008, and the draft before you tonight is not mine alone by any stretch of the imagination. It's actually the product of input from at least three separate town planners and also a number of different lawyers, aquarium staff that are still with us, aquarium staff that have, have departed over the years, and a variety of other stakeholders in the process. As you heard from Suzette, the aquarium is currently, and from Chuck, the aquarium is currently in the process of a strategic planning initiative that's undergoing right now for the aquarium, and that's going to eventually lead into a master planning phase later this year. But tonight's hearing is solely focused on the proposal for a text amendment to your regulations. And what we're proposing is a new regulatory framework. We're not asking for a zone change, we're not asking for master plan approval, we're not asking for site plan approval, we're simply adding a new section within your regulations that would allow us to come before you with a master plan, which we're thinking probably is going to be early 2026, to come before you, to share with, with you and to discuss with you the future of the aquarium. So today is sort of step one or the first step. What we see is a several-year process to plan out the future of the aquarium. This is a zoning text amendment, as I said, and therefore, as you know, you sit in your legislative capacity tonight. You have broad and sweeping discretion in your review of our application. You have the choice tonight of, if you close the public hearing, to approve the amendment as we proposed it, you can deny it if you choose to, but also, and I think this is an important one that a lot of commissions sometimes forget, is on text amendments, you also have the ability to modify it. You can, on your own accord, make changes to it, maybe to tweak some language, maybe to add something, to remove something. The only thing you can't do is make it less restrictive than proposed. You're also, by the state statutes, given direction on the, the criteria for evaluating a text amendment. And really, you're required to consider, and I say consider, and I think I've said this to this commission before, you don't necessarily have to follow, but you must consider both your plan of conservation and development and your comprehensive plan. You should know that your comprehensive plan is your set of zoning regulations and your zoning map read together. The Marine Research and Education District floating zone, as, as I think Chuck properly said, is really intended to recognize Mystic Aquarium as a unique and important community institution and one that requires some additional flexibility within the zoning regulations to accommodate its needs and its programs. Your P O C D makes it clear that maintaining and promoting Mystic Aquarium as one of Stonington's key economic drivers is an essential goal of your plan. I think Suzette talked about the impact of this institution on the community as a whole. More importantly, though, and I think I would stress this tonight, the P O C D specifically instructs the Planning and Zoning Commission to consider changes to zoning to offer additional flexibility for the future growth of the aquarium, and it will allow them to have a level of certainty in their long-term planning. The M RED, which is the acronym we're using for the Marine Research and Education District, acknowledges that Mystic Aquarium has been an integral part of Stonington for over 50 years, and it allows an opportunity, as Chuck pointed out, to finally be recognized as a conforming use under a master plan scenario. Using floating zones are not new approaches, and certainly in your comprehensive plan, your zoning regulations and your zoning map, you already use and utilize a wide variety of floating zones for a lot of different purposes. You've even done it for a similar sort of tourist attraction, the Mystic Seaport, as well. So what we're asking for is also consistent with your comprehensive plan. This is exactly the type of tool that this town has long used for a variety of different purposes. So with that, I'd like to turn to the regulation itself. I know you have a copy of that in your package, and I'm just going to try to briefly go through it in the interest of time, and we can always come back and we can talk about any particular section. So we start with the purpose of the zone. The purpose of all of the zones is actually enlisted in Section 2.4 of your regulations, and so we have it in 2.46, where we list Marine Research Education District. And again, this district is really intended to encourage research and educational uses related to marine science that really enhance the town's character and also support tourism activities. It's that tie between research and education and tourism that I think makes the aquarium such a special place. The zone is really intended to allow for the establishment, and this is maybe the most important part, continuation and expansion of those uses going forwards in a way that's compatible with the community. If we go down the list, we also have sort of a general section, sort of explaining how the, what, what the master plan were, what the master plan in, in the floating zone means, what it entails. You'll notice that much of the language here may seem familiar to you. So what I've done and what previous authors did was to use sort of the format for your floating zones that are adopted for the variety of other floating zones and port that same language over. When I write regulations, and I write regulations for towns all over Connecticut, I try to speak with the voice of the regulations as they exist. One of the worst things possible, as a land use attorney or quite frankly, a property owner or a landowner, is you're reading through a set of regulations, and you get to some new chapter, and it's, it's a completely different set of language, they have a different system, a different process. So when I write regulations, I try to use a lot of the same language that you've already adopted, that are already in your regulations, port it over and tweak it for the particular purposes. So we've done that here. So here in, in Section 10.6.2 under General, we recognize the Sea Research Foundation, Inc., which is the, the actual entity behind the Mystic Aquarium. It's a center of excellence in the field of marine sciences. We, we talk about the aquarium provides a variety of research and educational uses along with animal rescue, which I think Suzette pointed out is really the, the burgeoning field or the burgeoning element of the, of the aquarium in recent years, and tourism activities. And we provide, the aquarium provides all of these to further its mission to conserve and protect aquatic life. And so here, the commission makes a statement that it recognizes that this is a unique, it's a major institution, and to really thrive, there needs to be greater flexibility in the zoning regulation to accommodate the aquarium's needs and programs that they change in the years to come. We have some additional language in Section 10.6.2 stating that this is a floating zone governed by a master plan. The master plan would be reviewed by this commission as a zone change. That's a public hearing. You said again in your legislative capacity with that broad and sweeping discretion. And it also says that if you, we do come before you with a master plan and you do approve it, if we make a material or substantial change to that master plan, we have to come back to you and get it re-approved. And so this is language, this is not new language, this is language literally borrowed from your other master plan districts. And there's a little bit more about just sort of the, you know, acknowledgement by everyone that this is the commission acting in its legislative capacity. It's the broadest discretion that you're allowed to exhibit under Connecticut law. We set forth in Section 10.6.3 some considerations for approval. Obviously, the first one, when you consider a master plan that's being submitted, it must be consistent in conformity with the plan of conservation and development. In addition, we want to make sure that activities and facilities that are going to be permitted in the Marine Research and Education District are, are in harmony with and compatible with surrounding neighborhood and land uses. As you know, the aquarium itself, it doesn't have a lot of single-family homes anywhere in the vicinity of it. It's got, obviously, the Mystic Village next door, it's got Commercial across the street, Stone Ridge and sort of Latizori's development is, is out quite a distance, but you have a, you also have sort of the Maritime Drive Dead End that goes in the M1 zone as well across the street. So this is an area where you have a lot of single-family neighborhoods around it, which is, I think, a positive thing, maybe the, probably the biggest differential between us and for instance, the Seaport, which where you have sort of an established residential community right around it. And then finally, the, the last consideration for approval is the use scale and architecture of structures and landscapes in the project. The commission needs to evaluate that to make sure that it adds to the visual amenities of the area and is generally consistent with the existing appearance of the surrounding neighborhood. I've worked in Stonington for a number of years now. This is a town that cares about what buildings look like, what facilities look like, how they're properly screened, how they fit into the landscape. So we want to make sure that that's part of sort of the criteria in, in evaluating the aquarium's vision for its future. 10.6.4, in my opinion, is probably one of the more important sections of the regulation. And again, it's very similar to what you'll find in other master plan districts. This is how the district is established. And again, you only create an, an M RED district by the approval of a master plan. So if the aquarium submits a master plan and you deny it, there is no district. It only is formed with the approval of the master plan itself. And it is, fundamentally, your master plans are laid out, you have requirements for master plans in your regulations, they're different from site plans, they're not fully engineered plans, they're more of a conceptualized vision, and then we'll talk a little bit about implementation. So it's sort of a first cut on a, on a plan for a piece of property without all the engineering detail you'd find in a site plan. We do want to, we do say that, we, we do also add in the establishment of district that any addition to the master plan, any changes to the master plan must still meet the criteria for the purpose that's laid out in 10.6.1. And then in subsection C, we have district eligibility. This is where you can have a master plan. Where can a master plan land? And so the first one is, it must include, or it must be contiguous to an existing M RED that encompasses the Mystic Aquarium. So you can't have a Marine Research and Education District in Poughkeepsie, just not possible. It's got, your initial district will have to include the aquarium, and then it could grow, the master plan could grow in size, you could grow the zone, but it still has to be contiguous to an existing M RED. So it's really, the Mystic Aquarium is the core of it, it must be in the first M RED, and any additional expansion must be contiguous to that aquarium initial zone. There's also a restriction on the underlying zoning. So it must be either M1, which is sort of the Maritime Drive area, or it must be TC-80, which is sort of the Mystic Triangle area. There aren't really any other zones in that area, and we're not looking to expand beyond that area. So it's very limited to the area. Remember, it's still tied to the Mystic Aquarium. So if you had an M1 zone somewhere else in town, that doesn't count, because the Mystic Aquarium isn't over there. So it's really just the area of the existing aquarium and the immediate surroundings. We have a minimum parcel size, so if you're going to create a district, you must have at least 80,000 square feet. There won't be an issue with that. And then also, you obviously need to have public water and sanitary sewer for the zone. If you, a zone change is approved through the approval of a master plan, a site plan must be submitted and approved within 12 months of the date of the zone change approval. Again, this is language you're going to find in all the master plan zones, and then plans for the, the master plan, final plans have to be filed in the clerk's office after the approval. Again, this is taken, literally lifted from other master plan zones. In 10.6.5, we start to talk about the master plan itself. The master plan is the rezoning, it's the creation of the zone. The master plan submission is, is to, to allow the commission to determine whether the proposed uses and layouts conform to the purpose of the section and the P O C D. And once the master plan is adopted, it establishes what your bulk and dimensional characteristics of the zone. It replaces the underlying zoning. So for instance, today, the aquarium sits on TC-80. If we had a master plan that was approved for the aquarium lot, it will be the master plan that governs zoning, not TC-80. And that's very similar to all, how all other master plans work as well. There are requirements for graphical elements of the plan prepared by professionals. And again, we also added some additional language here that, you know, we, the architectural design of buildings and structures needs to be part of the master plan, so you can really vet whether the massing, the scale, the, how this would fit in, how a future development on the aquarium property or properties fits into the overall landscape and, and character of the, of the aquarium site. 10.6.6 is an important section. Now we're getting into implementation. So we, tonight, we're working on the actual text amendment to create the framework. Hopefully, in early 2026, we'll come before you with a master plan to rezone the aquarium property or properties. But then it's the implementation of those elements in the master plan. So if there is, for example, a new animal rescue facility shown on the master plan, you don't have the permission to just go ahead and build that, you have to come back to the commission and get and implement through the site plan process. So you have to bring that engineered plan set where you have your drainage, your grading, all the engineering details, utility connections, all of that comes before you. So you're actually implement the master plan through site plan approval. And again, that's a very similar scenario with many of your other master plans. That can be done in a single site plan, or it can be done in a series of site plans as well. And I, we would expect that there would be multiple site plans as different elements of the master plan are actually implemented when there's funding available for them and when we're ready to move forward with them. 10.6.7 is specific design standards. Typically, in a master plan, master plan establishes the bulk and dimensional characteristics for the master plan zone. We thought it would be important to put some, what I like to say, sort of some guardrails or bumpers on those. In some communities, I wouldn't do that. Here in Stonington, I think it's a good idea, just some minimum requirements. And so the first thing we did is talk about area and bulk requirements, is we did put a provision in about pre-existing structures. The aquarium site is developed right now. There are buildings there that have been there for 50 years. Many of them are non-conforming. A great example is the main aquarium facility is right up against 95, it's right up against Clara Boulevard. So we have existing non-conformities. So what this regulation would do if the master plan was approved is any non-conforming building would become conforming. That building no longer has to be a non-conforming building, because it doesn't meet a setback. But if you want to build onto it, if you want to put an addition onto it, if you want to put a new wing onto it, that, that has to meet the zoning requirements laid out in the master plan. So you sort of, you bless what's been built in the past, any new stuff has to meet the requirements of the master plan. We do have set some, some minimums, a minimum district, a minimum district size of 80,000 square feet, a minimum front yard of 30 feet, a minimum side yard of 15 feet, a minimum rear yard of 30 feet. We do have a provision that it would be only 15 feet to I-95. That's really because of where the building is in, in relation to the state right-of-way right now. The maximum building height, we lift this directly from the TC-80. So this is the standard right now for the aquarium, is 50 feet with the ability to increase to 65 feet to allow for architectural features and roof lines. We, our maximum floor area ratio and our maximum lot coverage would be established by the master plan in a more traditional approach. We also have, for signage, we require, the master plan will have to have a unified signage plan for the site, so that the idea here is that it can be submitted as part of the master plan or a site plan application, but signage within the M RED has to have some common themes. It should use common design, it should tie itself together. So in this includes, this will include not only just So in this includes, this will include not only just sort of the entrance signs, but also your wayfinding signs, signs showing where there's parking or pedestrian, even signs maybe potentially between the exhibits. So the idea is to have a common theme tying the whole district together. In section B, under design standards, we have performance buffers. So as part of an approved master plan, the commission may require buffers of a size-type material as it deems necessary to protect abutting residential uses or important natural resources. I think at the current situation, natural resources are really the key thing. There are some natural resources sort of at the northeastern end of the aquarium property. There's also some natural resources along the Maritime Drive area, so we want to make sure we, we protect them. There are no residences right now in close proximity, but we would hope this master plan will govern us for many years to come. So there may be residences in the future that other developers do. You may change zones, there may be opportunities for residences on other adjacent properties. We want to make sure there's an opportunity to buffer them if necessary. But again, it gives the commission a lot of discretion to put a buffer in where it makes sense and, and to the level necessary. And we have here, we have some additional sort of language to empower the commission through the master plan process, to require some additional landscaping and screening, and even allow buffers to be on adjacent properties. Subsection C, we've added a stormwater provision. Again, in the master plan stage, stormwater is typically not generally focused on because you're not engineering it. But I've been involved in a lot of master planning, probably one of the biggest failures of master planning, in my experience, in the issue of stormwater is when master plans don't require you to at least consider or conceptualize stormwater issues. So you, sometimes we'll get a master plan, and I've had this in other towns, the master plan's approved, and nobody asks the question, well, where's the stormwater going to go? And so the master plan's approved, they come in for a site plan, and all of a sudden there's detention basins or underground drainage. So what we're, we're asking for, and I've done this in some other communities where I've written master plans, is at the master plan stage, we at least need to provide a conceptualized stormwater plan. If you're going to deal with stormwater, are we doing surface detention basins? Are we doing underground infiltration? Certainly, if we're doing surface detention, there should be areas in the master plan that are left open for that. And there should, you don't have to engineer it, you don't have to calculate peak flows, but you should be able, by a rule of thumb, say, we need this area to deal with our stormwater. I think that's important for environmental protection. Subsection D, in, in the standards, is parking. Parking is probably one of the bigger issues for the aquarium. We have a good situation right now. We are able to park our guests, and we, we do that in a creative way. We have looked at, we've internally sort of monitored our square footage. And so what we're suggesting for the master plan would be a minimum off-street parking requirement for any uses within the MRed district will be at one space per 200 square feet of interior gross floor area, regardless of the use. So if you've got one, you have 200 square feet of area, whether it's being used for the gift shop, an exhibit, maybe a restaurant that might be within the district, it doesn't matter, or a new animal rescue facility, it's one space for every 200 square feet. And so that gives us a little bit of certainty, and we know we can meet that right now with the existing physical plan. We do, though, believe that we can imagine a time when this zone may encompass multiple parcels of land that are under control of the aquarium. So we want the ability to share parking and, and to be able to look at uses that may have different peak times as well, to be creative. But the idea is that the MRed district will be parked as a single district. So you could, might have satellite parking on another lot serving the aquarium, you might have an annual animal rescue facility off-site within the zone that has its own parking, but maybe that parking also serves some other aquarium uses at a different time. So we have this sort of standard one parking space for 200 square feet. We also added an alternative process where we can come to the commission with a parking assessment. And your regulations already allow for parking assessment under section 13.2.7, where you can actually have a parking traffic engineer actually look at the specific uses and show to the commission that the parking that's being provided, even if it doesn't meet the one per 200 square foot rule, is sufficient for the uses allowed. So again, this is an alternative, and again, we don't see this as an issue right away, but years down the road, we may need to take a look at that and be able to at least propose a different equation or calculation for parking. And then parking lot standards would be driven by section 13.8, which is your parking sort of lot design standard in the regulations. But we do have the ability to tweak that in the master plan as well. 10.6.8 is permitted and prohibited uses, it's the last section. And so permitted uses, and again, all of the uses in the, in the MRed are allowed by site plan approval, once approved in the master plan. But it lists a variety of uses that are research and educational uses with related tourism activities. And again, they're implemented by site plan approval, and the uses include, but they're not necessarily limited to, so an applicant could come forward, the aquarium could come forward with a use that's similar to this or fits the, the nature and the purpose. But here are some of the uses that we've laid out at this point, would be indoor and outdoor aquarium and zoological exhibits, the first time we actually use the word aquarium in the regulations. Marine education and research facilities, marine animal medical facilities, animal rescue, care and rehabilitation facilities. You see the focus on where we think we're heading toward the animal rescue side. Theaters for educational use and interpretive spaces, museums, meeting spaces, off-street parking facilities, offices, and tourism-related uses, including restaurants and retail stores. We also have some accessory uses, off-street parking facilities, maintenance facilities, minor accessory structures, recreational facilities and public spaces, and solar energy collection systems. We also, finally, as the last section, included some very specific prohibited uses. We borrowed a little bit from some of the other master plans. Certainly, no industrial uses that are inconsistent with the purposes outlined in 10.6.1. Any of the auto-related uses, things like repair or maintenance, sales, anything doing with car sort of maintenance is not allowed. Gasoline filling stations is not allowed. And maybe the last one, which is very important, no water parks, theme parks, or amusement park facilities. This is not in any way an effort to try to allow an amusement park through the aquarium. The mission of marine research and education is paramount, and then those related tourism activities are really what we're driving at. So that is the proposal that we have before you tonight. Again, your charge is to review it, consider it, and compare it to the P O C D, your comprehensive plan, the information that Chuck and Suzette provided, and sort of what, where we're headed as an organization. You can approve it, you can deny it. You can also modify it. You can also change something, you could strike sections, you could add sections. But we wanted to present it to you tonight and at least begin the dialogue of this evening with you. So I want to thank you for your time tonight. Certainly be able to take any questions you may have, and we reserve a ready rebuttal after the public section. Thank you.
That's a good question.
Sure.
I might be oversimplifying things, but I'm, I'm new to the, I'm new to the board. We're in the middle of our zoning rewrite, and one of the things our consultant told us is we have too many zones. My only experience with a floating zone is the Seaport. And I thought that it was a little wonky, they had to come in with their master plan, and we had to prove, I wasn't, I was not seated, but where the dumpsters are going, to put a kitchen across the street where their, where their freezers are. I guess I, I don't, so these uses, what, wouldn't it be simpler to just add these uses to the TC80 and M1? I mean, are we afraid that somebody else is going to build another big aquarium in, in Mystic? Would that cover all of your needs? I mean...
It doesn't, it doesn't allow us to expand the campus. Right now, are the expansion directions...
Well, no, if you, if, if those uses or their related, you know, accessory uses were allowed...
Right. So it's a good question, and it's a fair, it's a fair question. Couple reasons. First, the, the MRed district is allowed to be established in both the TC80, which is where the aquarium now, but also the M1, which is Maritime Drive across the way. These uses are not consistent with M1 right now. So that's the first question. The second one is...
What we could add, though?
Theoretically, you could. The other option, the other issue, though, is the issue of the uncertainty in the regulatory process when you do long-term planning. One of the great benefits of this and other mass, other master plan districts is we can come before you with our master plan, and that's the point where the commission has the discretion. So we show you our vision, we show you the different elements of our vision. That has a public hearing, that's the most uncertain aspect of this because you have all the discretion. But once it's approved, once you say you bless that master plan, our next step is site plan approval. Site plan approval, you do not sit in your legislative capacity, you sit in your administrative capacity. And the law says that if I meet all the requirements of your site plan requirements, you, I'm entitled to get a permit from the commission. So that changes the calculus for us when we're planning and we're doing capital program, not just for what we're doing this year or next year, but five years from now, 10 years from now, 15 years from now, when we have the certainty that we're not going to run into a commission that doesn't like the aquarium or doesn't want us to grow anymore. You guys may be all in favor of it, but 10 years from now, it might be an issue. It gives us a level of protection so that we can plan for the future. So you're absolutely right. You could go in and you could modify the TC80, and you could modify the M1. I think that's harder to do than a master plan where you can drop it in. I do think you have too many districts, but I don't think the, the floating zones are your problem. I think the floating zones are actually the place where you will, you promote the most creativity and the best types of development. You could probably cut down the number of residential zones you have. That's my opinion, but for whatever it's worth.
I think the master plan for, for, you know, a campus like this has a certain number of advantages, like the master plan for stormwater management, that is very tough to do on an incremental basis. You know, a, a master plan that surrounds the zone, we don't do that anywhere. And we find ourselves wrestling with, how do we deal with the detention of, of post-development increases on this one quarter acre piece when it falls in the middle of, of a 10 acre piece that has tons of stormwater drainage problems? So, you know, the ability to, to resolve parking on a master plan scale, the ability to resolve stormwater management on a master plan scale, the ability to look at, at light exiting the facility on a master plan scale. I think for something that is as big as this, and something that is as sophisticated as this, master planning does offer us some advantages. But I think it's very good to point out that there is an alternative, you know? We, we could take a simpler approach to this. But I could also see from my work with developers that the uncertainty associated with things like special permits is very difficult to plan a 20-year capital improvement plan around, whereas a master plan is more like a subdivision. If you meet the regulations, the commission has to approve it.
Quite frankly, that is the driving reason why I recommended the master plan, simply because of the strategic in master plan process that they're undertaking right now. It seems to fit perfectly within it. They're doing this internally to come out with a document, and then we can come, if we have the framework set up, we can bring that document directly to you. Now, I don't suggest, in my opinion, I would not advise my client to submit that master plan just blindly, but a master plan should really be, in my opinion, and the best ones I've done, are really a give and take. So it's the kind of thing you workshop. You say, this is what we have, this is where we're headed, this is what we'd like to do, what is your reaction? And we can move back and forth. And then, really, I love the master plan process because the discretion that you have to be flexible, you can, we can create some really creative solutions to, you know, some of the zoning problems that you face. The worst thing are the, the regulations that are black and white that make you select less than ideal development solutions.
Agreed. I think there are a couple of things that, that I would like to see added to the list of, of infrastructure things you look at in the master plan phase. I think you were wise to include the stormwater in there. We, we had to sort of force another developer to put it in his master plan. He didn't think it was appropriate to put in the master plan, but I, I believe that you're, you've got the correct approach there. I think the other things that I would like to see in it would be consideration as it relates to wastewater disposal, because we do have restrictions in town. You know, our ability to accept new discharges is limited, and whether or not maybe some stone, stormwater holding, or, I'm sorry, wastewater holding technology might be required here for, you know, time of discharge type of issue.
That's a, I mean, I think that's a great point, and particularly, if we're looking five, 10, 15 years off, we should be modeling, you know, what our potential discharges are, and we should have contact, you know, with WPCA. You know, where do you see your capacity five, 10, 15 years?
Well, it's perfect timing, actually, because we're doing a facility plan. So if there is a master plan and somebody has an idea for, for a growth, then that should be built into the facility plan that WPCA is doing. And we're doing the facility plan right now.
Right.
So, so it's good timing. The other thing that I think is important is to consider water supply issues. You know, we, we don't have unlimited water resources here. In fact, quite to the opposite, both for domestic consumption and for fire suppression. So, you know, I can't imagine you're going to accomplish, you know, any huge additions or public assembly additions without considering fire suppression. So the ability to, to do that, you know, whether you need additional storm or fire water, fire suppression storage facilities is something that should be built into this as well.
I think, I think looking at that conceptually through the master plan process is totally appropriate. I think it's a great suggestion.
It can be modeled very easily.
And it can be easily added to the framework of the regulations that we've drafted.
Correct. And it, and, you know, as opposed to some last-minute ugly above-ground storage tank, which I can't see this town ever approving.
And we don't want that either.
You know, you can plan, plan for underground storage and maybe possibly pump facilities where, where those facilities may be required, and, and staging those facilities.
And the answer may be, in, in communication with the, the proper authorities, there isn't going to be an issue based on the master plan that you put forward. It may be, yeah, that might be an issue, you might want to put something in the master plan now as a fallback position if that capacity isn't there. So I, I think it's very good points.
So those, those two elements immediately come to mind. I don't know whether we want our, you know, we have a consultant that's working with us on, that has reformatted the regulations. I think it's great that you mirrored that format, you know, because it appears that this format drops right into the format of our new regulation.
I do it, and do it in every town I write regulations in. So I think it's great that you did that.
I, I would feel remiss if somehow we didn't have a review, you know, by that subconsultant that, that perhaps just looked at this and, and maybe recommended, you know, some, some other additions, additions or deletions as well.
We've, we've both been there.
For, so, I mean, and that would not necessarily mean that we would approve it tonight, so...
That, that's, that's fine. I mean, you have, you've got 35 days to close the hearing, you have 65 days to decide. I mean, certainly, we'd love to have this decided by early May if possible. So if you could, if we could work within that timeframe, that would be great for our time, for our timing internally.
You know, I, I'm sure the commission can complete its deliberations. I don't know what the outcome's going to be, that's up to each individual. But, but I, I frankly think master planning in this area is, offers greater flexibility to the town, and I also think it, it could help to secure the future of something that's vital to the town, and, and the aquarium is vital to the community. So...
So how...
Others should comment.
No, I, I mean, I agree with your perception there, and I just wanted to ask, Clifton, is this something that you think, you know, this amount we could take and have Francisco look over, and could it be possibly the subject of a, the next rewrite meeting so that we can operate within the timeline, or no?
It can't because it's an active application.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So no.
So we can't put it in there? So he can't look at it then at all?
It couldn't be up for discussion at that meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that's correct. I mean, it's... No, it would be, it would be ex parte if you discussed it, but I don't think there's anything, and, and, Clifton, if you disagree, please let me know, but I don't think there would be anything wrong with sharing the draft with Francisco. And just like you could, you can send an application to anyone for review and comment, you know?
That's what I'm talking about.
And like, and that could come back to you, like, we have comments from Southeast Regional Planning. I think, unless you don't, unless you think that would be inappropriate, just as long as it's not discussed outside of the public hearing process.
I think the, I think the point that I'm, what's making is the one that you're making is not ex parte communication. So it can't be discussed at the... So it can't be discussed at the future.
So it just can't be, but it could be shared with him. He could provide input back to you and us.
It's really both you and Francisco.
Right, that's what I'm thinking.
You know, it's not just Francesco, it's you and Francesco.
I could.
Consider him staff in this regard, that that is something staff has access to.
I.
I think, yeah. Go ahead.
Yeah. I think it becomes shaky. I mean, we have a, we have a contract with FHI Studio to conduct a zoning rewrite of the existing text.
This is an existing.
This is an existing text. I would say if it was approved, then it could go to FHI and they could tweak it and, you know, make an amendment to their process. But to do this, I would, I would lean towards it, I would err on the side of caution in this one and say that providing an application in any format to a consultant that's not working on our applications for review, I think it could fall under.
Certainly, I certainly think it would be actionable money to do it too. So it's not part of its scope.
It would have to be either some form of contracted mod or, you know, something to do that, but.
I guess the good thing is this, this regulation's been, was reviewed by Keith. I believe it goes back far enough that Jason reviewed it. So, and I know Clifton and I worked on this final version together. So it's, it's really been vetted by multiple people over the years.
I would be comfortable if we, if we just work through some of the issues that we have with you. And, and, you know, some of the additions that we talked about here tonight, WPCA, water supply, fire suppression, again, on a very high, a high level, not.
Yeah, I would, I would suggest we go through this application separately. And then if we're still contracted with FHI by the time it gets approved and is put in the text, then we can send it to them and then they're reviewing it as part of their contract.
Oh, okay.
So I think it would have to be.
That's an excellent, that's a good workaround.
And I can tell you, we're not, we don't expect the master plan process, our internal master plan to be done by the end of the year. So you've got plenty of time to do that. At the earliest.
So how do we want to go through this? Do we want to go line by line? Do we want to send all our comments to Clifton? Do you want to bring it up to the next, at the next meeting? Because I have several comments on kind of your outline that I think need to be considered. I did tell you, I was a little disappointed, given that it's the aquarium and, you know, that there's not more in here about light protection, dark sky protection, et cetera. You're dealing with marine animals that are used to being, you know, in the ocean and you have nothing like that in here. Any kind of, kind of upscale environmental conservation things, nothing's in here on that.
Yeah, sustainability is.
It's, that's disappointing. I think, you know, we've talked about sharing off-street parking. You know, as a whole, our discussions have not been positive around that. So I'm not sure that's, that's something that needs to be in here.
Can you expand that, can you expand that comment a little bit more?
So, you know, having a separate, you know, I think you've got something in here that says you might have some kind of agreement with another.
The concept would be is in the zone, there may be multiple parcels and that parking can be shared between those parcels as part of the master plan process. Rather than, for instance, I know in your regulations in the past, at least, I don't know exactly what they say on this point right now, but the idea of like satellite parking and getting approval to park off the property, that's sort of built into this master plan so that you would look at, just like you would look at stormwater comprehensively throughout the whole district, you would look at parking comprehensively throughout the whole district. And I guess, just so I understand, you don't like the idea of sharing parking between different individual properties? Or is there a concern there?
If it's within, if it's within the properties that you own, right? And it's within the district, then I'm okay with that. But going to say, I'm going to now park in somebody else's parking lot and we've got this, we've got this separate contract.
No, that's not, that's, that's actually not the intent.
Okay.
But Lynn, we could certainly clarify that in there. Because the idea is it would be under the control of the aquarium. The idea fundamentally is if we had stuff, for instance, for example, if we may have had some properties on Maritime Drive, the ability to, aquarium-controlled properties, to allow that to cover some of our parking needs on other parcels within the MRed zone only. We're not saying we're going to use, for instance, Mystic Village Parking to satisfy our needs. That's not what we're suggesting.
That's great, because that was my concern. I also have a concern on the height. 65? I just, I cannot in any way, shape or form approve something that's saying that they can go up to 65.
You realize that that's, that's the current standard?
I do realize that that is TC.
You just don't, you don't like the TC standard right now?
No, and it's not an M1 standard.
That's correct.
So absolutely not. And you mentioned buffer and you say buffers for residential, let me see if I can find it, residential properties. But you've already, in your opening statement, said there weren't any residential properties. So that should come out. It's not, anything to the residential properties, it needs to be buffered.
Not necessarily. If the zone gets expanded, it could, or if the uses of a budding, of a budding piece changed, a buffer might be required.
Well, my understanding is that it would be the TC-80 zone and the M1 across the street. I mean, that's it and it has to be continued.
Let's say that the concept is future proofing. So in case the regulations changed five years down the line and somehow residential was allowed in the TC, or it was completely rezoned to something else. If that, if residential was allowed there and then expansion happened, the residents would be protected by the buffer component. So it's future proofing.
I'm reading it as it's, let me just see if I can find it. And again, I can look at this a little bit more carefully, but I read it as that the other property can have part of the buffer. So let me just.
That is a provision that I've added.
Yeah. So you own the buffer. It's not the other property that's owning the buffer. It would be the district owning the buffer.
We do have that language already in the regs though, too, to allow property owners to consent on the buffers between property owners. So that's already in our regulations.
It could be, but they're asking for other special things and I think we should take that out. I do. And then you have plural for restaurants and retail stores. I think we should limit that in some way. We don't want this, and I know you have no intention of it becoming a retail district, right? But that should be limited. You can have one store related to your, to the aquarium or your facility, but there shouldn't be stores, plural, all over.
Maybe percents, maybe percents of the district.
Exactly. And that's the same with restaurant. Maybe you have one restaurant with a certain number of seating, depending upon your parking and the setting, but it's not a tour, it's, you know, it's not restaurants. So there are little things here that I think we have to go through line by line. These are just examples as I read through quickly. So how would you like to do that, Chuck?
I don't think it's up to me, and trust me, but I think we could start out by feeding your concerns back to Clifton. And, you know, we consolidate them and we get them to the applicant and perhaps consider some modifications to the language based on, on, you know, the consensus of the commission around.
I think everything Lynn has said are good comments. And I think I can address particularly things like the light and dark skies stuff. So you have lighting and dark sky compliant language in your regulations that would trigger it site plan. But could we put belts and suspenders and make sure it's here too? And particularly with things like the animal exhibits, you know? I think that's a really good comment. And I think I can add that, just like I can add WPCA and sort of water supply.
Yeah.
So generally, generally.
And I think there are some other things though, you know, as I think of it more under the sustainability thing. And not to make it so complicated that, that, you know, the master plan is, is a document that's this thing with stormwater modeling in it. We don't want that. We definitely don't want that. But, you know, issues like rain gardens and other things that might make this a very exciting site, porous pavement, to be considered in certain areas where you can reduce runoff through, you know, completely sustainable approach. You know, those types of things I'd like to think about and feed my thoughts to Clifton on maybe how we could get those into the master plan to sort of soften the hard elements of the project.
I think that, I think that's fine. And in fact, in many of these types of regulatory writing, this is how it works. You know, I show sort of the first draft and I say, geez, you missed something. Like where's the lighting or where's the sustainability? Generally speaking, I usually work with staff and I, what I typically do is come forward back to the commission with what's called proposed modifications of approval. Because remember, you can approve as presented, you can deny or you can modify. And then you can tweak those even further if you don't think we went far enough. The only thing I would say tonight is two weeks from now, on the 15th, I'm out of the country. And so two weeks is a little bit of short time to go through that. So we have 35 days of public hearing, which would bring us to May 6th, which is, I think, your first meeting in May. So if you wanted to get your comments to Clifton, he could then collate them, get them to me. I could put together a draft and we could exchange it back and forth and get you sort of that possible modifications of approval document for your May 6th meeting, if that fits your schedule a bit.
How do you feel about that?
To get those comments to come separately from what's being discussed tonight?
I'm taking good no's, but it's, I, it sounds like Lynn might have some more.
I think there could be some just expansion on, you know, within the context of what we've talked about here.
Within the context, okay.
Yeah.
I don't think there's anything wrong with you speaking to your staff directly with ideas. You can't speak to me, but you can speak to your staff. And then your staff can say, Bill, I think it would be important for you to cover these issues or try to address these issues. And then I can go back and forth with Clifton. Clifton might say, hey, I think you did a nice job on this or I think you missed the mark here. Can you?
What's your concern? That it's not part of the public hearing process?
I just wanted to clarify for the record how that would be done.
Okay. I want to deal with your concern.
It should be, it should also be individual, correct?
That's what I was going to ask, because you want us to send it individually to you. We shouldn't be discussing it outside of the public hearing.
Yeah, that would be ex parte. But if you speak individually with Clifton, it's like if Lynn has.
Run them this way, they go back to you, they're the subject of what we discuss at the next public hearing.
Sure.
So that there's transparency in the dialogue.
Yeah, and my, my goal would be to come back with a responsive set of possible modifications.
Right.
Trying to capture everybody's concerns. And quite frankly, if somebody comes with a potential change that's like a deal killer for us, I'll say it. I'll say like, we can't do that, you know? We can't take aquariums off because that's what we want to do.
I haven't heard anything.
In fact, I think some of these suggestions, particularly the ones that.
We certainly are not endeavoring to do that.
No, I think we can definitely work together.
Yeah, I do think the master plan for this particular site is actually an advantage to the town. And it's a huge advantage to an attraction like yours. When we were, I worked on the Adrian's Landing project and that project had special legislation. And they even considered, you know, special contracting regulations in the state to give us more flexibility so we could attract developers who are willing to make an investment in a project that large. So the fundraising portion of this, the financing portion of this is almost impossible without a plan that, that is not subject to the whims of, of, you know, huge change moving down the road. As, you know, we're all term limited here. You know, no one on this commission that's currently sitting here will be here when this plan is implemented. You know, or they'll be in the tail end of their service. So this is a plan that I see is going to serve the site for the next 10 to 20 years and beyond. So, you know, I can see the value of it, both to the town and to, to the property owner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the commission.
Clifton, do we want to set a date by which we should be?
You may want to, you may want to give other people a chance to talk.
Yeah, no, no, we definitely.
I wanted to understand.
We definitely want to go back.
I did have one comment before. The only, the only comment I'll make before we get to the public hearing component is since FHI did come up in this and our contract and work with them, I would state that the entire goal of their Phase 1 and Phase 2 process has been reducing redundancy that has bloated the text. So if the language is already in our regulations, which it is in the case of lighting, it doesn't need to be stated again unless it's.
Unless it's to be more restrictive.
Unless it's new or more restrictive, which isn't what you said. You just said that it's, you want the same thing that is already in the regulations. The dark sky compliant.
I want to make that very clear. I don't want the same thing that's in the regulations. I want you to be creative and thinking more about night sky and light pollution in that area. Especially thinking about the animals that you are there to, to work with. So it's not the same thing.
Well, the dark sky component and the light pollution is the same thing. That's our view there.
We'd be happy to add something about the animal. I think we can, I think there's a little round that we'd be happy to reach.
Well, why don't you get your concerns?
Yeah, I'll start.
And I think we can come to some consensus around it. I think everybody will do the same. Clifton, are you okay with all that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. And we've, I'm not going to put this in my package again since I walked away with this last time. If there are no further questions, Clifton, we can move to public comment. Since, is your presentation?
I'm all set, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just ask for the hearing to be continued to the 6th, just of May, so I can be here.
After we have public comment, you know, that has to be in, in the public records.
Thank you, sir.
That will be in the open part of the session here. So we'll move to public comment and I do have one person signed. Under speakers, Carleen Donnarumma.
Sergio is here. Were you planning to present something for the applicant?
No, they said their presentation was concluded. Sergio, you're certainly welcome to speak. We always love, always love to hear.
I say enough most of these meetings, so I'm going to break tonight.
That's fine.
For the record, my name is Carleen Donnarumma. I have to apologize because I'm not accustomed to speaking off the cuff. I had very little time to look at this application, but I did read it through and there were certain things that hit me. And I think the biggest problem with this thing is the timing of it. Because as you have stated, you are working with a consultant. And this kind of bothered me that this is coming at this time when we should have waited until you were all done with doing what you're doing with him. Because there are things in here that you're working on right now. You're working on buffers, you're working on parking and they're writing their own regulations for, for these things. So that, that's very bothersome. When I'm reading through this, by the way, I love the aquarium. I'm a charter member, you know, way back when, first when my throat opened up. And I already told Suzette that I have some concerns to let her know that I was getting up to talk.
Just so you know, Carleen, you're not a fright. I don't want you to.
Yeah, did you see the big hug at the beginning of this meeting?
But she's always done the right thing, so.
Yeah. The, this thing was kind of screaming out at me that what they're really looking for is to do something on Maritime Drive. Now, that may or may not be their, their thought at all, but they do have parking lots on Maritime Drive. So my thought is, and for some of this language, it seems like talking about buildings and structures and protecting neighborhoods and, to me, it sounds like at some future point in time, there may be new buildings over there on those parking lots. So there are, there are a lot of concerns and we just don't know exactly where it's going to go because it's floating. You don't know where it's going to go. So one of the, a couple of these things that I do want to point out, the, under, under the. things that I did want to point out, the, under, under the specific design standards, I thought the 15-foot side yard minimum was awfully small, 15 feet, kind of small. And as I said, the parking, we're, we're working on it now. You are working on it. I listen in. I don't contribute, but, and I don't make decisions, but you do on the parking that the consultant is working on now. And also, there's language in here, the performance buffer. Well, our consultant just said we're going to take away the word performance. So those are little tweaky things. And when you get to the very last page under permitted and prohibited uses, I'm wondering why in the world do we have auto-related uses to include repair, maintenance, sales, paint shops and car washes? Why do we have gasoline filling stations? And I think the attorney said that that was what was in the other regulations. But it doesn't make any sense to me, to be in this, this thing. So I think there's a lot of work that needs to be done on this before you can even possibly approve it. And I would hope you take the time to consult it. Do really consider what this is going to lead to. And I wish them well, because if they're going to expand, that's great. It'll be great for the town. But we need to have good regulations. And I think, I, I agree that maybe Francisco should be looking at it too. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, as always. You wish any rebuttal?
I don't have any rebuttal. There probably, there may be some other people who want to speak.
Anybody else that would like to speak in the audience?
Mr. Valero, is it?
Robert Volante. Yeah. Mr. Chairman, thank you. And commissioners, thanks for hearing me. I, that's fine.
See, I told him it's not.
I didn't, I didn't sign in or anything like that. But I just, just a couple of comments. And I guess I can.
Well, I was glad to see you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So just a couple of comments. First of all, I, I really commend you guys on, on your foresight of looking at this and the comments that come back. And really, really good dialogue between the two parties. I think it is really good. So, and thank you for taking the time you guys do at 10:11 Pocket Mike to do this stuff. It's fantastic. So thank you for that. I'm a resident of Connecticut, of Stoneington. I'm, been using the Mystic Aquarium since I was 10 years old. My family's gone there. And we've always supported the, the aquarium. Our dealership is right across the way. So we're neighbors with the aquarium. So, so we've been part of the aquarium for a long, long time. Currently, I just was chairman of the president's council for the aquarium. I'm on the board of directors for the, the aquarium. So we want to see the aquarium succeed as it has. And I think a lot of great minds came together to put this plan in place. And I think a master plan in this floating zone change will be instrumental in us carrying forth our strategic plan to keep the aquarium growing and doing the good work that it's done over the years. And we, we talk about, you know, tourism and attraction and all that. But really, it is educational. I mean, my, I went there as a kid and, and went through a lot of the programs. And all my children went there as, as kids and went through a lot of the educational programs. And I'm actually a grandparent now. I have two grandchildren, three months old and six months old now. So I'm sure they'll be going to the aquarium. Thank you. So I'm sure they'll be going through. So I just, I just appreciate that, the time you guys take to look at this and, and, and help us go, go in the right direction. And I think it's the way to go. So that's all I got to say. I'm, I'm in favor of it, obviously. And I appreciate the time that you guys all put into it. So thank you.
Your comments are important too. You're a major property owner in that area. So we appreciate you coming down.
Yeah, we're right next door.
And sharing your insights as well.
And I didn't put this stuff about no automotive stuff. They, they came through.
Thank you, Mr. Volante.
Your honor, thank you. Anyone else?
Bill Middleton. I'm on the board of directors of the aquarium as well. I also own a number of businesses nearby. So it can certainly speak to the economic impact that the aquarium has. And, you know, just want to say that we're, to have this world-class facility that has such a broad impact in our town, but really has very little impact because of where it is on the residents and on the quality of life. I think that's just a really unique combination that's, that's worth, worth mentioning. And I just, again, wanted to thank you and reiterate Rob's comments about thanking you for taking the time to do this. I know these are late evenings and I'm on the police commission. I get off pretty easy. It just, you know, kind of a couple of comments that came up about, you know, concerns about sort of rushing this through. I, you know, to sort of touch back on the earlier comments of this having been sort of kicked around for years. I, you know, I certainly don't think this has been rushed through in any, any regard. In, you know, some of the things in terms of specific concerns about, you know, environmental issues, light pollution, et cetera, I, I think that's a little bit implicit in our mission anyway. So it almost sort of goes without saying, we're clearly not going to do anything that's going to adversely affect the animals or the environment. It's just a big part of, big part of what we do. And not to rush it, but I would, it just seems like that, you know, if, if this is in fact approved, then it can be considered as part of the regulations. Am I understanding that correctly? So, you know, again, not to, not to rush it. But I think that really achieves your aim of having the consultant review it by approving it. And then you can tweak it thereafter. Anyway, I don't want to go on, but I wanted to thank you again for, for taking the time.
Thank you for coming down and sharing your thoughts with us. We appreciate it. Anyone else?
Sergio, last chance tonight. You got another chance.
Better, better.
We're doing a little bit here. I'm talking about height or anything?
No, you don't.
Clifton, do you have anything else to add to the discussion tonight?
None at this time.
You're, you're okay with the, the whole process of feeding our comments to you?
Sure.
Then I think perhaps a motion to table this application is in order.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to continue the hearing for this application to the next, to our May 6 meeting. This is for the C Research Foundation, PZ 2512ZZ.
And I would add to that, that comments from individual commissioners should be to Clifton within how many days, Clifton?
A week, whatever you want. A week.
Okay. Are you amenable to that modification?
Sounds great.
Okay. So a motion to continue and we all feedback our comments within a week? Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Seconded by Lynn. Thank you, Lynn. Any discussion, further discussion of the motion? Hearing, none all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Chairman abstains. Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
See you in May.
Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn this hearing.
A motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you all.